Two seconds. Still no hands?
I do not see any hands. There are some attendees that are joining right now on the screen. But I do not see hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna close the general public comment this time. Of course, we will have an update for public comment on the individual items on the agenda. So the next item in the agenda is the consent calendar. The only thing on the consent calendar is the approval of the minutes from July twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. Does anyone have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Anyone want to take those out the consent counter? Don't see any hand. So I will take a roll on the consent for the consent counter. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
DeCarty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kennedy? There's a hand raised. Rick?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
All vote in favor. So the minutes are approved with a vote of seven to zero. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. We'll now open public hearing on a use permit for Minkin. Apologies if I butchered your name. One twenty four Dunsmere Way. This is a request for use permit to demolish existing one-story, single-family residence, attached garage, and construct a new two-story residence with attached garage, a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and area in the R one U, single-family urban residential zoning district. We have a staff report here. And it is, I think, Ms. Khan? Yeah. Do you have anything to add to the staff report?
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners and members of the public. There is a, an update. An email was sent to the Planning Commission by the immediate rear neighbor at one-two-one Bay Road after the publication of the staff report. I would like to summarize what was stated in the email. This is in regards to privacy. To them, to the rear of the property, they would like to remove the, or propose the removal of the lower portion of the master bedroom window, so as it to align with the remainder windows on that elevation. Also to reduce the width of all the windows that are present on the second floor of the rear elevation. And lastly, they would like for the applicants to provide more landscaping in order to provide more privacy screening between the two neighbors. That is all, Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission from this time? Seeing none, I think we, do we have a representative of the owner or the owner present tonight to make?
Yes, we do. We do have the architect and the owners of the property. They're here to answer any of your questions.
Okay, did you want to make a presentation or just answer questions?
So Eson or through the chair, if I may, address the
Please.
Owner, Eson or the owners of one twenty four Dunsmere Way, if you wanted to give a brief summary or background of the project, you may do so now. If not, it is okay. You can just answer the questions that the planning commissioners will have for you. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, this is Ethan. I'm the architect for the owner on the property. And we have been developing this project for quite a long time, and we finally get this point to submit for the public hearing. We have a very good feedback from our adjacent neighbors while we are developing the scheme. However, in the last minute, we heard the, the concern from our backyard neighbor. I think after a brief discussion, we would very much prefer planting the screening trees to provide extra privacy. And as that also is our concern as the owner, and to separate and well protecting each other. And however, reducing the, the window size, which is very commonly normal-sized, might is not preferred if, if we can. But we would like open to answer any questions to be more in, in more detail. And to, to, to another point, to remove the lower portion of the window. And to be honest, that portion is really to provide more access from between the house, the room to the, to the owner's backyard, but not too much actually. Saying so or preventing better privacy, saying so to the, to the neighbor's backyard, which we don't feel that's very much helpful. So in, in quick summary, I think in priority, we would like to provide much better screening trees in, in our, from our side. But yeah, we are open for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, the architect? Mr. Riggs?
Questions?
No questions, okay. Okay, in that case, I will open it up to public comment on this application. So if anyone has a public comment, please raise your hand. Mr. Pruder will recognize you.
Good evening again, everyone, members of the public, planning commissioners and Chair Doran. Thank you. And again, as a reminder, at this time, members of the public can comment on this item by raising their hands. Or if you are calling in by telephone, pressing the star nine buttons will also prompt a request by raising your hand. And I see at the moment there is one hand raised. And so if I may through the chair, I can introduce the person and have them speak for their public comment.
Please.
Thank you. And we have a Katie Ferick who has raised their hand. So I will now give you the opportunity to talk at this time. Your three-minute public comment period begins.
Great. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Fabulous. Hi, everybody. Thanks for allowing the opportunity. I'm very delighted to be part of the Planning Commission meeting this evening as a former planning commissioner myself, served with Commissioner Riggs for eight years. And want to first take the moment to welcome our new neighbors to the neighborhood. We're really excited that you're here. So please don't take my comments of anything just that we like to, you know, we want to have a shared interest in enjoying our own properties and privacy. So hopefully you also know that there's a neighborhood street dance right out in front of your house this Saturday evening. So just wanted to weigh in on the letter I sent. Want to appreciate that the setback on the second story is, is thoughtful. It does, it's actually the unusual, this, I'm actually looking at your house right now. The side yard, the side fence line is where the greatest privacy intrusion would be into our yard and back bedrooms. And so whatever the, you know, Eson reached out several months ago. If there's any architectural improvements that you might make that are, that would allow a little bit greater sightline privacy, both to our yard and into your bedrooms. And therefore usually that's raising the sill. That would be much appreciated. And then in addition, the back fence line has the power line. So there's no tall trees that we could plant that would be able to remain. And so the side fence line of your property would provide some privacy. And we have some that we did between our house and the neighboring house that built the second story a few years ago, and they did that very same thing. They put some opaque glass on some lower windows and raised sill heights on some second-story windows. And we put in some screening trees that are nice and thin, but tall and leafy. So hopefully this can be added to the plan, and we look forward to you being part of the fabulous suburban park neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you just state your name for the record?
Oh, sure. Sorry, I forgot about that formality. Katie Ferick, Menlo Park, one-two-five Bay Road.
Thank you. Mr. Pruder, do we have other hands raised?
Thank you, Chair Doran. At this time, I see one additional hand raised. If I may through the chair, I can introduce them. And the second commenter may be able to speak.
Please.
At this time, we have someone by the name of Megan. So Megan, you will have three minutes to speak. And at this time, I am going to enable your microphone, and you may begin to speak, please. As Chair Doran mentioned, state your name and your locale, and you may speak at this time.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, my name is Megan Martinez, and I am a neighbor, the back neighbor at one-twenty-one Bay Road. Thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight. And yeah, sorry, I'm new to this. So to piggyback on what Katie just said, we're very excited to welcome you to the neighborhood. And we're happy to work with you to make this house exactly what you want and great for us as well, hopefully. So as, just to sort of reiterate what we laid out in our email, we're really just concerned with the second story and direct vision into our backyard, which we do use quite a bit. We have three young boys. And so having privacy back there is very important to us. So just again, like I said, to reiterate, the lower portion of the master window, you know, if you look at the house that's two down on Dunsmere, there's a two-story. It has similar back windows and it does not have that lower portion. And so that lower portion would really add significant visibility into our backyard. And so we'd like, we'd like that one taken out and so that all lower sills are basically at the same height all the way across. And then the shrubbery along the back fence will help. Currently, there's a dead tree and some other trees that don't really provide a lot of protection. And so we would like those replaced at even intervals to really block our yard. And then again, the, the windows, making them narrowing them slightly so that they're less visible into our yard would be our three requests. So that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Pruder, do we have any other hands raised?
Thank you, Chair Doran. At this time, I see no other hands raised. But I'm happy to wait another moment if you prefer, and we can confirm at a later point.
Well, we've been in public comment for a few minutes, so hopefully people have had an opportunity to raise their hands. If we don't have any hands raised now, I'd like to close public comment and bring it back to our virtual bias for discussion. Do you want to have any comments on the application? Mr. Barnes?
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Doran. Good evening, my fellow commissioners. First, a matter of disclosure, I am friends with the Martinezes, the subject property at one-two-one Bay Road. It will not affect my decision-making on the project, but as a point of disclosure, I've also been to one-two-one Bay Road to get a look at firsthand what the access is, the visibility is from one-two-one to the new project. So with that said, Chair Doran, first, I'd like to ask a question to staff, if that's okay?
Yes.
And it relates to what are the screening options for landscape screening where you have a situation in this case where the power lines, and I suspect there's a, I'm going to look to the site plan, there's an easement, you know, along the back there. How, what happens in a situation when you're looking for screening and what can be planted either inside, stepped from the fence to more towards the interior of the lot, or what other options are available for, for those situations?
In terms of, good evening, Commissioner. So in terms of landscaping, definitely with the overhead wires, it wouldn't be possible, as Ms. Ferick already has noted. In that case, the landscaping may not be aligned with the rear property line or where the fence is located between the properties. They would have to keep in mind the overhead wires and create a setback between the rear property line and provide a setback that would be sufficient for the type of species that they would be considering to use as landscaping, which would we, which we would need to verify with the city arborist to ensure that the full canopy can be, can blossom without interfering with the overhead wires and also potentially provide the screening that we are requiring this project. So definitely that's something that we would have to loop in the city arborist for confirmation in regards to species and how far it needs to be planted from the overhead wire.
And then into that consideration is whether it's a tree with a big canopy or whether it's more of a columnar shrub, like even if it's a tree like a pittusporum going straight up and down, or oleander, which tends to be more compact in its spread. And then that, so as a condition of approval, I'm curious how that would be, would be worded. We often do, you know, screening as a condition of approval, but in this case where it can't be up against the fence. We would word that in such a way that it would what, give flexibility to staff to discuss with the property owner to provide the type of screening that we think about and we suggest here. Then you would work with the property owner to figure out what that might be or how, what would be the mechanics of that? To kind of figure out, okay, great, post, post, say approval and condition of approval is, you know, come up with the appropriately screening foliage or screening species. How does that work? Who makes that decision? And how does that bounce back and forth between what's appropriate, what's not? Would you take the lead on working with the applicant to come up with something?
Definitely, I would work with the applicant to come up with a design solution. However, this needs to be reviewed and approved by the city arborist. So we would put in a condition that also states this fact that this needs to be reviewed and approved by the city arborist. So I wouldn't be able to do it myself, but I'll be happy to facilitate the process. And then I'll defer to Karina for more information.
Thank you. Yes, so through the chair, I just wanted to add a little bit. I think it's fine to add a condition tonight, and it is helpful to staff to have a little more information of the number of trees and types of trees the commission is looking for. And then we could word the condition that the, the trees be reviewed by the city arborist and the planning division. But I think we could definitely want to have some guidance of maybe ten feet from the easement or something like that. And then how many trees and what type that commission is looking for. And I think that would be a robust condition that we can go forward with.
Yeah. Thank you. That is my initial question.
We have other commissioners who'd like to speak at this time. DeCarty?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Doran. Also disclose that I know Katie Farah can serve on a community board with her. But again, feel like I can be impartial in this conversation decision tonight. I, my question is of the, the applicant or the applicant's architect about the, the window in the master that sort of extends below the level of the other windows in the rear. And just explain a little bit more about its intended use and purpose. So through the chair, is that okay?
Yes.
Or maybe I can just explain a little and let owner add. In my, what I hear from the owner in the original intent is comparing to the other small bedrooms. And proportionally, this master bedroom will be the main room that for the young couple leave, spend a lot, lot of time on. And, and proportionally, it gives an, just a sufficient lighting. But also, we are, as they are thinking, having more family life in their backyard. And they would also, the lower seal would also provide their own access, like line of side light to their backyard. So that is not meant to be looked over. Something is really meant to be looked down into their backyard. That's the purpose of, of that window.
And I apologize, but can you remind me, what's the distance from floor to the bottom sill in that window then?
Um, give me a sec. The, the seal height from the inside is one foot from the floor. Comparing to the others are three foot from the interior finish.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions at this time.
Mr. Riggs?
Thank you. Um. So I guess I should also note, although Ms. Ferick did already note that we served on a board together. I actually do not recall if I have been to her house, and I don't believe I've seen the backyard. So I think I'm speaking sort of from the same perspective that I have on other commission reviews. And I think I'd like to make the same comments as I have made on other commission reviews, which is that, first of all, when a two-story arrives in between a group of one stories, it's actually a, quite a dramatic change to all the neighbors. My house is in a one-story neighborhood, so I get to be reminded from time to time. There is a two-story that's behind me and two houses over. And yet they can see a portion of my yard and my bedroom French windows. So our neighborhoods were designed for one-story buildings. They were laid out that way. And a two-story is a, is definitely an impact. It's a legal impact in the United, in Menlo Park, but it's an impact. So we, we do have to look with care. And certainly, this is a, a large house for a neighborhood of five thousand square foot lots. I think I, I hear that a agreement is virtually at hand to plant screening trees. And Ms. Ferick has indicated tonight that screening trees previously planted for a similar condition have worked well in her yard where they are not a dense wall, but apparently they're evergreen. So that might be a starting point in order to select a species. Certainly a solid wall such as Eugenia or Pittusporum is a, is an issue and an oddity. And really, I think the only other issue tonight is the window sill. And I, I have to say that if one hopes to see the backyard from the second floor bedroom without standing up and going to the window, lowering the window all the way to one foot from the floor could be helpful, but I, I really don't think that's the answer. And I don't think that that's sufficient reason to break the model that we have held to year after year in asking that second floor windows be at least three feet. I will remind those of us who have been on the commission a while and mention it to those who haven't that we have often asked that window sills be raised to five feet where there's a more immediate proximity, which is not the case here. There is rear yard setback, but the very minimum rear yard setback in Menlo Park would be forty feet between buildings. So fifty-five feet is simply not that much of an increase. So I would like to make a motion, if I, if the chair entertain, will entertain this, to approve the use permit per the staff report, but with two conditions. And one would be the revision of that one master bedroom window sill to three feet from the floor line, or that is to match the other windows. And to plant screening, both at the rear property line and enough of the side property lines to be effective to their rear and rear askew neighbors. And that would be working with Menlo Park City staff, which of course would include the city arborist. So that's the motion I would like to suggest.
Commissioner Riggs, there's a window on the, the east elevation as well that looks to have a low sill and side elevation. Did you want to make that subject to your motion as well, raising that sill height?
That window would be in the stairwell, is that correct?
That's right.
I believe the architect has indicated, or someone has indicated, yes. I have had reservations about stairwell windows because you view from the second floor and not from the landing. And as you descend, I may be incorrect, but I didn't actually see an unobstructed conflict here. So I would welcome comment from any other commissioners, whether there is in fact a privacy risk in that case as well.
Actually, looking at the plans more, I think there's not a privacy risk because the floor is well back from the window. And by the time you're close to the window, you've descended several steps. So I think it probably is not a problem. Is there a second motion? Mr. Barnes?
I will make a second, and I will first query the maker regarding the screening of trees, the Ms. Sandmeyer and Ms. Khan. It indicated more information as it relates to number of trees and species of trees. And I'm curious as to what your thinking is on that. That's to the maker. It's the, Mr. Commissioner Riggs. You're, you're muted, Commissioner.
I hit the wrong button unnecessarily. Thank you for noticing. I am rather taking advantage of the fact that the Fericks have already tested a species and a spacing. And you know, through the chair, I don't know whether we're in a position to ask a commenter whether they could share species and spacing with us tonight as a guideline, which of course still would be presented and reviewed by staff.
That's a, a novel procedural question for me, but unless Ms. Sandmeyer tells me I can't, I would like to consult Ms. Ferick on that. Sandmeyer, is there a problem with doing that?
No, that should be fine.
Okay, I see Ms. Ferick has her hand raised, so I think she's standing by for this question.
I am. Thank you, Commissioners and Chair Doran. I actually am just going to search for the name of it. It was meant to replace this kind of wide, overly bushy hedge. And but it's a really nice thin, but they are small and slender. I'll look up the name. They're spaced about a foot and a half, maybe eighteen inches apart. And they're, they go along the part of our side yard between us and our neighboring property. And I would estimate we have about twelve to fifteen of them on that chunk of. So if there was some in the back and some on the side, it would probably be about double that to like actually make a filter that doesn't fully engulf. You know, you don't want like the solid green wall, but like, you know, enough that it would fill in and provide some privacy. but like, you know, enough that it would fill in and provide some privacy as well as some some filtered light.
Through the chair, could I follow up?
Yes.
I'm a little surprised that there the spacing is so very close. Are these just eight-foot shrubs?
They're meant to be, oh, sorry, Commissioner, they're meant to be screening trees. They are more of a shrub than a tree. The the trunk is only probably two to three inches in diameter, but they're very tall, so they grow a good. I would say ours are about, they're only about four or five years old, and they're about 15 feet tall.
But they're about 18 inches apart?
Yeah.
Hmm. Well. That I hadn't expected because
I'll send a photo.
That's awfully close spacing for trees. That's that's the spacing for a 24-inch hedge. So I'm not sure whether I could in my motion respond entirely to Ms. Sandmeyer's request other than to suggest that an appropriate height to screen two-story windows from an adjacent backyard would be at least 15 feet. But a spacing that I would expect to be more in the six to eight foot range. So again, I I think we'd have to defer to the city arborist with, I think the intention for screening is pretty clear. I think the concept is hardly a new one. And I would like to think that the city arborist would be better equipped than some volunteer commissioners. I mean, I I have presented that I know landscaping entries fairly well, but I I just don't want to assume that. And I I I don't want to put myself forward as an expert.
Ms. Sandmeyer, does that give you enough definition on the motion as it stands?
Yeah, I think that's fairly clear. I guess one point of clarification would be, I think the the way Commissioner Riggs explained it was screening along the rear and side property lines, but for the rear property line, it would be set back from the overhead lines. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you very much. That would have to be in a legal and functional position, and I guess I was hoping that the coordination with the staff would would cover that. And and then it was only partial side property line, just enough to be effective for the screening. And I don't want to imply that our new neighbors have to build a wall around their rear yard.
Thank you.
To the to the maker, Pterosporum, do they fall? I think they fall into the category. Do you reasonably, Commissioner Riggs, that Pterosporums would not be among the candidates as well?
There is a Pterosporum variety that is is a potential. And those would be spaced at least eight feet apart because they're not entirely columnar. Also, I I have to say, I don't know when they stop growing, and we wouldn't want to make the, what I call it, the redwood mistake, which is that you plant a tree for what it will look like in five to 10 years, and 20 years later, you realize that you've created a monster. So again, I I would defer, but I think potentially, yes, a Pterosporum has a the one that you speak of is a relatively open form.
Right, and I think as it relates to the language you run on the screening, I think the appropriate metric is what is going to provide in a three- to five-year timeframe mature growth patterns that provide for screening. So I'm looking at the horizon of three to five years, if you can kind of to get to critical mass, and then it obviously grows from there, but in terms of what it's going to take from a timeframe perspective to give some idea to the type of species. Is that agreeable to you as well?
Yes, absolutely, and I I point to trust that the city arborists will take a look at the landscape plan. If there's a patch of turf that is being irrigated on a regular basis adjacent to the trees, the trees will never stop growing.
I will note that the, we have another letter from Mr. Aaron Rederer, who is at 117 Bay. So we've heard from 125, which is adjacent left directly behind in 117, and he asks for require evergreen screened trees in addition to his other requests on the top. So I want to, before we leave that, even though he hasn't provided public comment. The way we're currently contemplating it, we're not providing any screening for him or for that individual. And I guess as a question to the maker, is that of all concern to you?
It was indeed with concern, and I I think we have covered that because not only the rear property line, but the near portion of the side proper like property lines are included in the motion.
On the both right and left side?
Yes.
Oh, got it. Okay. That's clear.
I mean, lacking an existing mature tree. I will confess that I could only see so much from Google.
Okay, and then no raising of the sill heights and no narrowing of the window. Is that correct, Commissioner Riggs?
The only sill height that was raised was the one that was at one foot in the master bedroom.
Okay. Okay, I can support. I am supporting in my seconds on record with the conditions as we've just gone over here, and looking for any other commentary. Oh, I'll hand it back to the chair, excuse me.
Thank you. Before I call for a vote, I see that the applicant has the hand raised. I'd like to see if this is agreeable to them. So just like you what they have to say.
Hi, thank you, Chair. Good evening. Thank you so much for discussing our application. We are the homeowner of 124 Dunsmere Way, and we are happy to agree to the conditions raised. We just have a couple of questions. One is that we are totally fine with planting the screening trees. We just have a question about whether the tree root will cause any damage to the house foundation, especially it's a two-story home. I looked up online, people, some people saying the trees should not be planted within like 10 feet away from the house, so I'm not sure if the screening tree would be different or if there is any potential damage to the house foundation. And secondly, regarding the setback from the fence, like regarding the setback between the tree, the screening tree and and the fence due to there is electric wires. Like, who will make the decision of how 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 much should be the setback? Because the back, the the lot is not a large lot, and the backyard space is limited. That's why we did as much as possible to build the house as front close to the front street instead of the back back fence as much as possible, so we'd like to preserve relatively larger space in the backyard. So that's that's the question. Thank you.
Thanks. I think on the second question, the city staff can guide you on what's legally required in terms of the easement for the power lines. On the first question, I think between the staff and the city arborist, they should be able to recommend trees that that won't endanger your foundation. Does anyone else on the commission want to speak more? Otherwise, I'm going to call for a vote. Okay, Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
DeCarty.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Riggs.
Yes.
I'm and and sorry to interrupt. I forgot. I have one more question. So currently, there are two existing trees alive in the backyard. One is a huge apple tree at the rear west corner, and another, I don't recognize the species, but it's also a large tree right in the kind of in the middle of the backyard, very close to the fence. And those two trees, they their leaves fall in the winter time. So is that, should we like remove those existing trees and plant new new screening trees? So those two trees, they're actually pretty high.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I think I think this is just out of order. We're taking the vote, so I I want to keep this evening's meeting moving, and you can consult with city staff and city arborist about the treatment of existing trees on your property. Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
And although yes as well, so the motion passes with the amendments. Sorry, the application with the provisions in Commissioner Riggs. Motion passes seven to zero. I'd like to move on to the next item on our agenda. We have a use permit for 219 Laurel Avenue. This is a request for use permit to demolish existing one-story, single-family residence with attached garage and construct a new two-story residence with attached garage on a substandard lot, regard a minimum lot with the R1U, single-family urban residential zoning district. The project includes an attached accessory dwelling unit ADU, which is a permitted use. We have a staff report on this. And author of that staff report is also Ms. Khan. Do you have anything to add to the staff report?
Good afternoon, Chair. There are no additions or updates to the staff report at this time. Thank you. Staff is available for any questions and answers, and also we have the project architect and owner's representative tonight to assist with answering questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from Ms. Khan from the commission? Okay. Well, then the applicant or their architect is welcome to make your presentation at this time.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jean Kwan. I'm I'm the architect for 219 Laurel Avenue. So this lot, this project is located as a pretty narrow lot. It's only 50 feet wide and quite deep, quite deep lot. So we design a single two-story, single-family residence with attached ADU. So on the second floor, we set back the second floor furthermore to give to to meet the daylight daylight plan requirements and also provide more privacy to the left and the right neighbors, and also all the window facing the facing the left and the right neighbors. We have a pretty small window, so the sill height is five feet to founder from from finished floor. And also, we talked to the neighbors on the left and the right, and also the back neighbor. So they all support the project, so we don't have any additional comments from them. And this is a Christmas-style house, so we have horizontal siding and also have a E for overhead is 18 inches wide and have a kung shingo roof, so it's pretty clean and I think the mass is is pretty proportionally designed. So I think that's my presentation. So I don't know if any the committee member have any questions, so I can't answer the questions.
Do you have any questions from the commission, the architects? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Did the applicant wish to make any additional comments themselves? Nope. Mr. Pruder, can you see if we have any hands raised? I'd like to open public comments in this application now.
Again, Chair Doran, thank you very much. At this time, all attendees are welcome to, again, raise their hand if they would like to make a public comment for this project. And also, if anyone's coming in on the phone, you can press star nine to effectively raise their hand in the same manner, and I do not see any of our attendees with a raised hand. I'm happy to wait a moment to confirm that as well.
Yeah, a few moments. Any hands raised?
Time's still no hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to close public comments this time, bringing back the commission for comments. Would anyone like to make comment on this occasion? Okay, not seeing any comments from the commission. Do we have any motions? Commissioner Riggs.
I'm willing to make a motion. I will introduce with the the brief comment just that I think a lot of, there is a lot of sensitivity to neighbor privacy shown on the design of this house. And so I'll move to approve the use permit per the staff report.
Do I have a second? Commissioner DeCarty. It's a thumbs up. I'll take that as a second, so I'll call the role Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
DeCarty.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
And Tate.
Yes.
Vote in favor as well, so the application is approved as submitted, a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is environmental impact report scoping session on 1105 1135 1165 O'Brien Drive in 1 Casey Court referred to as 1125 O'Brien Drive Project. This is a request for environmental review for use, architectural control, below-market rate, BMR housing agreement for the construction of a new five-story research and development R and D building. Approximately 131,825 square feet of gross floor area in size, including chemical storage areas associated with the primary R and D use and a ground floor commercial space on a four parcel site in the LSB Life Sciences Bonus zoning district. A new surface parking lot would be constructed on 1 Casey Court. The four existing one-story office and R and D buildings would be demolished. As part of the project, 13 heritage trees proposed proposed removal. Proposed project would include a BMR agreement for the city's ordinance and guidelines. Proposal includes a request for an increase in height for a ratio if they are under the bonus level development allowance in exchange for community amenities. The proposed project also includes a lot merger and or lot line adjustment to modify the existing parcels. An initial study has been prepared and is included with the notice of preparation, NLP, for the proposed project. The NLP and initial study were released on Friday, July 30 of 2021. The initial study scopes out the following environmental topics from further review. Aesthetics, agriculture and forestry resources, energy, geology and soils, hazard hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, mineral resources, public services, recreation and utilities and service systems. The focus DIR will address potential environmental effects. The proposed project have not been scoped out as outlined in the California Environmental Quality Act sequel. In the following year, in the following areas, air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, population, housing and transportation. The city is requesting comments on the scope and content of this focused DIR. The project location does not contain a toxic site pursuant to section 6596.2 of the code. Comments on the scope and content of the focus DIR due by 5:30 PM Tuesday, August 31st, 2021. We do have a staff report on this by Ms. Maydor. Ms. Maydor, do you have anything to add to the staff report?
So Chair Doran, Principal Planner Kyle Perata, I'll actually be doing the staff presentation tonight. So Chair Dorn, Principal Planner Kyle Perata, I'll actually be doing the staff presentation tonight. We're actually transitioning this project from Katie to our contract planner, David Hogan, but I'll I'll bridge the gap tonight for you. So I do have a presentation. And so if we can get that up, I'll just start with a few opening remarks. One that I'd like to just update the planning commission on the NOP that originally was published identified the end date for comments as Monday, August 30th. We've extended that one day due to a delay in posting the the notes of preparation on the state clearinghouse's website. So that's been extended for one day. We have updated the the agencies that received the and interested parties that received the NOP previously. And then tonight we're updating the planning commission with that. So with that, I can take any questions to start, or I can move into my presentation briefly.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Pro at this time? Not seeing any. If you want to launch into the presentation.
Sure. So let's let me get this to full screen here. All right. So thank you very much. As I mentioned, I'll be doing the presentation tonight. We have two items in front of the the planning commission. It is the EIR scoping session and project study session for 1125 O'Brien Drive. That's the project name that the city is using. It doesn't compass four existing buildings at 1105 to 1135 O'Brien Drive and building at 1 Casey Court, as mentioned in the opening remarks by the chair. There are two existing parcels that comprise the project site, two, excuse me, two existing parcels with buildings and the undeveloped drainage ditch parcel is also part of the project site. So there's actually three parcels. The project sites locate on O'Brien Drive kind of at the bend between Willow Road and and University Avenue. And so, as I mentioned, the the purpose of site, there is two items. So the first item is the environmental impact report scoping session. That's an opportunity for members of the public and the planning commission to provide comments on the scope and content of the IR, including potential alternatives to be studied. Following the close of the EIR scoping session, we'll move into a study session. That's an opportunity for the planning commission and members of the public to provide feedback on the project, including the overall project design, such as architectural design, open space, layout, design, location, proposed uses within the project, and also the community amenity and building height. I do have a separate presentation that I can pull up at the study session with a list of kind of key topics, basically reiterating this list here, but in a bulleted form for the commission to consider. Those are also summarized in more detail in the staff report. And no actions will be taken at tonight's meeting. And so the recommended sorry. So the recommended format we do have for the EIR scoping session will start actually with a presentation by the applicant instead of the ER consultant. Apologies for the typo here. The staff report does identify that the applicant would present first and the EIR consultant. The the EIR consultant presentation will go last to set up the framework for the the public comments and the commission's discussion and comments on the EIR scoping content. That presentation by the applicant will be done at this time to provide context. So we won't do a presentation again during this study session. This has been the standard format for the last few EIR scoping sessions. Following both presentations, we'll move into public comments. We'd recommend that the commission hold questions that clarify to the end of the presentations and and only ask clarifying questions prior to public comment. Save any discussion, comments and questions for after public comment. With that, we'll close the scoping session and then move into the study session, which is another opportunity to provide more focused comments in the overall design rather than the EIR. So that concludes my presentation. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant team. And then following the applicant team's presentation, ICF, the city's EIR consultant, will make their presentation. Happy to take any clarifying questions before doing that, though.
Do we have any clarifying questions from Sir Prado? I don't see any. Let's proceed.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Bonifacio, Vice President at Tarleton Properties. I'd like to thank the members of the commission for the opportunity to return with our improved project from its original presentation in 2018. Our project as described previously is on the north side of O'Brien Drive between Kelly Court and Casey Court. Don't think I have control of slides. Okay. Just as a refresher, this slide reflects the original design where we received numerous comments from the commission regarding the prominence of the parking structure along O'Brien. The revision and revised metal has removed this structure and now surface park the entire project on this parcel and the adjacent parcel at 1 Casey Court. Also described previously, the project is made of two parcels. Parcel one consists of merged lots or merged property lots 1105 and 1135 through 1165, along with a drainage ditch. On this lot are existing one-story tilt concrete buildings. And on the second parcel is at 1 Casey Court is a industrial building as well. We have this slide reflects our aggregated that we have aggregated a majority of the public open space on O'Brien Drive. And right now, I'd like to turn over to Elka McGregor, our architect, who is with DES to go over design and architecture elements.
Evening. My name is Elka McGregor. Pleasure to see many commissioners that we've seen before. We are bringing to you a building that is another step beyond a lot of the buildings that Tarleton Properties has currently in this area. And this building is aligned with a streetscape here and push back as far as possible from the streets that we can get a pedestrian-friendly, public open space along the front of the building. You could see that from the last slide and this one. We have along the back of the building, a service yard and a oh, this is a plaza in front of the building, shows you that public open plaza there. On the right-hand side is a cafe that's open to the public and a large two-story lobby space. The next slide shows a roof deck that the building has. So this building has a roof deck in the back corner of the roof deck. You can see there's an architectural fin that doubles as some shading on the roof deck area. And this is a roof deck that would be open to the tenants of the building, not to the public. The last slide shows some of the finishes. Oh, sorry. Gives you a perspective view down on the roof deck in the front of the building. And if we could go back to the site. Yeah, thanks, Anthony. So the this this describes a little bit more of the site and shows you that this large plaza in front of the building that is up against the street, the service yard in the back and and has two driveways, one off the street on the right-hand side and one on the south side going into O'Brien Drive. Originally, we had five drive aisles coming off O'Brien Drive. So this greatly reduces and makes that street a lot safer. The other aspect of this site is that we've captured the back parking area on Casey Court instead of having a parking garage. And so what this allowed us to do as well is to incorporate one other pedestrian-friendly area in between the two sites. And from Casey Court, because we have very limited street access, can we go up one more slide back one? In this slide, you can see Casey Court has very limited street access. So we've done what we can to make the access to the public landscaping from that corner of the street. And it extends between both the properties, giving you this quiet walking space and seating areas between the two parking spaces. The building itself is high-performance, bird-friendly glazing. We have quite a bit of vertical mullions. They're actually extended out so that we have more shading, solar shading on that area. We have high-efficiency HVAC, very environmentally friendly building with bicycle parking, showers, lockers. The landscaping is all drought tolerant, like all the rest of the buildings on O'Brien Drive that are managed by Tarleton Properties. And the last element here is the shuttle parking. So there's just at the front of the building, you can see just at the bottom of this slide, there's a shuttle access. And so what Tarleton provides throughout their properties is shuttles to Bart and Caltrain and across the bay. And so the hope is that we can bring less car traffic to these areas and improve the public access to transit. I think we mentioned the cafe in the corner as well. Think that concludes most of the architectural features on the building.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else to speak for the applicant before we go to the ER consultant?
We do not. Thank you to the commission for for your time. We look forward to any questions or answering any questions you may have.
So do we have any clarifying questions for the applicant this time? I think we'll move to the ER consultant's report next presentation.
Hi, good evening, commissioners and members of the public. Thank you for coming out tonight to the scoping session for the 1125 O'Brien Drive project. My name is Kirsten Chapman, and I work for the environmental consulting firm ICF. We will be preparing the environmental review component for the project. I am the project manager. Also here tonight with us is Ling Jin from Hexagon, who will be preparing the transportation analysis. Should you have any questions after the presentation regarding the environmental review process? We will take note of them and we can respond to them accordingly. See, hold on. Okay, my presentation will cover the scoping process and the environmental process. I will also explain how to submit comments on the scope of the IR and describe the next steps. So the EIR team consists of the city of Menlo Park is the lead agency, meaning that they have the principal responsibility for carrying out the project. ICF will be the lead EIR consultant, and we will prepare all sections of the EIR with assistance from Hexagon for the transportation analysis, and then also Kaiser Marsden and Associates for the housing needs assessment. So we won't go over the project overview of the existing site because the applicant has given us the presentation already. But you can see the project site. And in our document, we do refer to parcel one and parcel two. And parcel one is where the new R and D building will be constructed and parcel two will have the the surface parking lot. So tearing from the Connect Menlo EIR, the project site is within the Connect Menlo Study Area. And the Connect Menlo EIR was prepared as a programmatic EIR, which simplifies the EIR process for future projects by incorporating by reference, the analysis and the discussion that have been presented in the programmatic EIR. By tearing from the Connect Menlo EIR, the environmental analysis for this project relies on the EIR for the following topics. It relies on it for the general background and the setting, the overall growth-related issues, issues that were evaluated in Connect Menlo EIR for which there are no significant information that would require further analysis, an assessment of cumulative impacts and mitigation measures adopted and incorporated into the the Connect Menlo EIR. However, due to the 2017 City of East Palo Alto versus City of Menlo Park Settlement Agreement, certain topics are required to be fully analyzed in the project-level EIR, regardless of whether subsequent activities are found to be within the program EIR's scope. So this slide shows the general steps involved with the SECA process for the project. The NOP, along with the initial study, which we will discuss next, was released on July 30th. The NOP comment period closes on August 31st. Following the close of the scoping period, we will begin preparing the draft EIR. When the draft EIR is released to for public review, a public hearing will be held to solicit comments on the adequacy of the EIR. A final EIR will then be prepared, and it will address all of the comments received during the draft EIR review period, both written and at the hearing. A certification hearing for the final EIR will be held before the planning commission and city council. And after the EIR is certified, the project can then be approved. And following approval of the project, a notice of determination would be issued. So initial study was prepared to evaluate the potential environmental impacts of the project and determine what level of additional analysis would be required in the EIR. The initial study was prepared to disclose the relevant impacts and mitigation measures covered in the Connect Menlo EIR. And the initial study also discussed whether the project is within the parameters of the Connect Menlo EIR. Based on the checklist, the following topics will be scoped out from further analysis in the EIR. Aesthetics, agricultural resources, historic resources, geology and soils, hazards, hydrology, land use, mineral resources, public services and utilities. So due to the 2017 settlement agreement with East Palo Alto, the focus EIR will be prepared. The EIR is a tool for identifying physical impacts to the environment by using the analysis conducted by our EIR team. The EIR will also be used to inform the public and decision-makers about a project prior to project approval, recommend ways to reduce potential impacts and consider alternatives that could lessen the identified physical impacts of the project itself. So shown here, air quality, biological resources, in particular, special status species and nesting sites, archaeological and tribal resources, greenhouse gas emissions, noise and traffic will all be analyzed in the EIR. In addition, alternatives to the projects, the project will be analyzed to fully reduce to potentially reduce the identified impacts. SECA guidelines require the evaluation of a no-project alternative, and other alternatives will be considered and will comply with CEQA. So the purposes of our scoping hearing and the scoping period. So as discussed previously, we are currently in the scoping phase of the project. This is the initial stage of the EIR process. The purpose of the scoping phase is to gather public input, identify key environmental issues, identify early identification of possible mitigation measures that were not considered in the Connect Menlo EIR, and also to consider possible project alternatives. Although my presentation included, well, I'm sorry, I guess my presentation did not include an overview of the project because the applicant did. But I do want to note that the intent of tonight's CEQA meeting, as well as the scoping phase for the CEQA process, is not focused on comments of the project itself or its merits. Instead, the comments for this part of the session should be focused on the environmental impacts of the project. So submitting comments, you can submit comments on the scope of the project. or the scope of the EIR via email or letter to David Hogan, who's the contract planner for the city of Menlo Park. As Mr. Prada mentioned earlier, he is bridging the gap between the staffing change. But David Hogan is the is the planner for this project. You can also speak tonight and we will note your comments and consider them during the preparation of the draft EIR. All comments must be received by August 31st at 5:00 PM. So thank you again for joining us tonight and we look forward to receiving your comments.
Thank you. We have any clarifying questions from this chapter? Not seeing any. So I think we should open it up for public comment. Mr. Prada, do we normally do just one public comment period for the EIR and the study session? Or do we open it up again later for comments in the study session?
Yeah, that's a great question. We should, we should open a public comment right now for just the EIR scoping session. And we'll, we'll ask members of the community to save any comments on the study session when we open that item. So we'll want to close this item and then move to the study session later and do a separate public comment at that time. And just as a reminder, if the commissioners could, could stay focused on the EIR scoping topics for this component, this item, and then save any design related questions for the study session, that would be appreciative.
Thanks. Okay, so I want to open it up for public comments on the EIR scoping session now. Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised?
Thank you again, Chair Doran. At this time, I do not see any hands raised, but as a reminder, if anyone would like to speak and provide a comment regarding the public scoping aspect of this project, please raise your hand with the hand icon or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine once again. And I still see no hands raised or comment request at this time.
Okay, let's just give it a few moments. Still no hands raised?
Still no hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to close public comments on the EIR scoping session. Bring it back to the dais for any questions or comments from the commission. Mr. DeCarty.
Thank you, Chair Doran. Thank you for the presentations. I'm looking forward to the discussion of the project later on, specifically to the EIR. Through the chair, if I could ask a question of Ms. Chapman, that would be great.
Certainly.
So in your presentation, you, you mentioned consideration of alternatives. So right now going in, you said you had to do a no project alternative. You'll obviously do an EIR for the project. What would go into your consideration for a different alternative? What are you looking for and, and what would be the consideration for a third or a fourth or a fifth alternative?
Yes, thank you. So for alternatives, we mainly look to reduce any significant and unavoidable impacts to a project. So if there would be a significant and unavoidable impact to traffic, for example, we would then consider ways to reduce that traffic impact. So for example, we would reduce the size of the, of the building and the size of the workforce. So there are fewer people who would be traveling to the project site. And therefore there would be a reduction in traffic. That is again, just an example. So usually, usually the, the alternatives are a reduction of size and employees at the, at the project to reduce the impacts. For other projects that we're working on in Menlo Park, we are analyzing a base level alternative. So some projects are in Menlo Park, they are applying for a bonus, bonus level development. So we will analyze the base level instead and see if that reduces the impacts. It may not reduce the impacts, but it's still something that's a feasible alternative. And also when we look at alternatives, we have to consider what is feasible and what is viable for the applicant. We can't just say, oh, we're going to have 50% of a building. That would not be most likely a feasible alternative for the applicant that they would be interested in pursuing. And therefore that would be considered and rejected.
Thank you, that's very helpful. So actually your hypothetical is exactly into my question. It's the intersection of transportation and greenhouse gas emissions and the impact on that part of our community. On both of those, it looks like from reading through what you just submitted, that the Connect Menlo EIR, the program EIR essentially has already concluded that there are significant unavoidable impacts despite the implementation mitigation measures. So does that essentially, is that a piece of the program EIR that then says you wouldn't take a look at those elements?
Greenhouse gases and traffic?
Traffic, yep.
Yeah, we will absolutely be looking at those just because the Connect Menlo EIR determined that all of Connect Menlo would result in a significant and unavoidable impact to those topics. That does not mean that this one project would as well. So we will be analyzing that in more detail. At this time, I don't know what the conclusions will be for those topics, but we will be analyzing them fully in the EIR.
So I'm, I'm really pleased that the project we'll talk about later has wiped out the parking garage. We now have surface parking is one of the things you would look at, a significant reduction in surface parking. It would actually not mean that you would have to reduce the size of the building or the workforce, but would essentially, you know, drive the demand for alternative modes of getting to the site, especially as the applicant said, they already have the shuttle. Is that a consideration?
We can, I've made note of it and we can certainly discuss that in further detail to analyze that as an alternative, yes.
All right, I appreciate my fellow commissioners on this. I'll just say one last thing, which is my opinion on this, which is my commissioners heard us as we were actually approving the final EIR another project last time. ERs are designed for sunshine. They're designed for the community to be able to have input. Just because we've had a program ER in place from something that was set in 2015 or 2016, when the committee, community is having significant impacts from the development of the growth that continues, means that they've got to be able to see and understand analysis that allows them to compare alternatives. So what has happened time and time again, when I have raised the question about parking and about transportation demand and reducing that, is that it does not get included as an alternative. We end up with a baseline, we end up with something fully built out, we end up with the alternative project. Turns out the alternative project's better for the community because of what it delivers than doing nothing. But it's worse for the community if you did everything and therefore the project falls right in the middle. That's useless. That is a useless EIR for the community to be able to understand what's happening with a particular project and for them to be able to ask questions and have a determination based on the expertise that you all and others are bringing to this. So if we don't find some alternative, it is, allows the community to be able to assess those questions around all of the traffic that is coming in and out of the community and the associated impacts, that's not going to be okay in this mix. So I'm, I'm frustrated and done with certifying EIRs that essentially do not give the community the information they need, the sunshine, to be able to engage with these projects in that kind of way. So I say that forcefully, mostly because of past practice and our history here and not because I have any preconceived notions about where you're going to last, end up with the project. And again, I thank my commissioners for allowing me the time.
Thank you. Do we have other commissioners that would like to speak at this time? Mr. Kennedy?
So I will lend my support to everything that Commissioner DeCarty just said. The whole purpose of EIRs was supposed to protect communities that lacked power to speak for themselves, you know? And so, you know, we continue to expand our city exponentially, whether the projects are good or they're, or they're less good or they're just bad, right? The bottom line is we, we, we don't really provide the no alternative, right? And so, you know, I think it really is our jobs to be the voice for all members of the community, not just for the developers. As much as we might love the developers and we might love the projects and the projects are done really, really well, that doesn't solve the problem that there are communities that don't have the voice to say, leave the, put nothing out there, right? Let's, let, it's too much.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Mr. Riggs?
Thank you. Is my mic on this time? Yes. So I'm gratified to see that we will be addressing transportation and housing, even though this project is on a location that already consists of this use and there is not a huge increase in density. It is important to note that any bonus level project doubles, I think more than doubles the FAR and height and that the impacts are nonetheless readable and significant to the adjacent communities and in subsequent communities. I did want to ask about water systems and to what degree they will be covered in the EIR, what the expectations are for under the EIR. Since 2016, not as if it was a new subject and it certainly dates back decades before 2016, but we have a limited amount of water in this state. And on the peninsula, we continue to grow. Communities like Menlo Park have an open door to development and then turn and scratch their heads about, oh my heavens, we don't have what is needed to support this in housing or transportation or utilities. That activity continues up and down the peninsula. As part of the EIR, I think we have to seriously look at where additional water is coming from and also what the potential for gray water system is to offset that use. And then I expect that it would also be an EIR issue that we continue to have surface parking. This is a condition that I at least had hoped would go away as we rezoned for higher density and required open space. When we have an entire lot designated for parking, we have an entire lot that is a heat island. And I, I think it's appropriate to evaluate that heat island in terms of alternatives. Those alternatives could be anything from shade trees to arrays of solar panels. But something other than simply providing 120 degree asphalt. Those are my comments in, in regard to the EIR.
Thank you. Do we have other comments from the commission?
Thank you. I just also wanted to reiterate what my fellow commissioners have said about parking and housing. Array of solar panels sounds great, Commissioner Riggs. But I, I also am of course, I'm most concerned about the transportation impact analysis and what mitigation can be utilized as well as what we're comparing it to. Less parking, not more, what's the housing impact? So I would agree with most of my other commissioners. So just want to put that out there, thanks.
Thank you. The other comments, questions, anything else from the commission? So Mr. Prada, do, have we provided enough input for the scoping session? Are there specific questions that you'd like the commission to address in terms of the scoping?
So the, so thank you for the, the opportunity to address that. The, the scoping is an opportunity for the commission and the public to provide general comments on the overall scoping content. So I think, you know, the comments we've received tonight, you know, we will be considering them as part of our development of the draft EIR. And then ultimately, we are also in a, yeah, our comment period. So we're also soliciting feedback from state agencies, members of the community through that comment, the NOP, the NOP EIR scoping comment period. So we'll certainly be considering those comments as well. This was just an opportunity to provide verbal comments by the planning commission and members of the community. So I think we, we, we can certainly end this item, if there are no other commissioner comments or questions, I'm certainly happy to continue the discussion if there are.
The other comments, final chance from the commission. Not seeing any other comments. So I'm going to close the scoping session on the EIR. That will close the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. Move to a study session on the same project, designed in G1 on the agenda. Study session for 1125 O'Brien Drive project. Study session on a quest for a use permit, architectural control, BMR housing agreement, environmental review for the construction of a new five story research development R and D building approximately 131,025 square feet of gross floor in size, including chemical storage areas associated with the primary R and D use and a ground floor commercial space on a four parcel site in the LSP Life Sciences Bonus zoning district. New surface parking lot would be constructed at one KC Court. Four existing one story office, R and D buildings would be demolished as part of the project. Thirteen heritage trees are proposed for removal. Proposed project would include a BMR agreement per the city's ordinance and guidelines. Proposal includes requests for increase in height and floor area ratio if they are under the bonus level development allowance exchange for community amenities. Proposed project also includes a lot merger and or lot line adjustment to modify the existing parcels. So we've heard the we've heard the presentations from the applicant, the EIR consultant already. I think there's no further presentations on this. Do we have any clarifying questions before I open the study session up for public comment? So I, did the applicant wish to speak further? To turn on your camera, okay. Do you have any clarifying questions prior to opening for public comment? Okay. At this time, I want to open the study session up to public comment. Any member of the public would like to make a comment, please raise your hand and Mr. Pruder will tell us if we have any hands raised.
Thank you, Chair Doran. At this time, I do not see any hands raised, but as a additional reminder, please feel free, members of the public to press the hand icon to raise your hand and be able to speak or press star nine if you're calling in for this meeting. And I'm happy to wait a few more moments if you'd like before we close public comment.
Yeah, I would like to give people a few minutes to comment on this.
If I may, Chair Doran, we do have one comment. I can share that person's ability now to speak. And this is from someone named James Regomes. So I'm happy to open that up if you would like.
Yes, please.
Okay. James Regomes, you are now going to be allowed to talk, you have three minutes to speak. And here we go.
Good evening, commissioners, honorable commissioners, hardworking city staff. My name is James Regomes. I'm here speaking on behalf of San Mateo Building and Construction Trade Council. The San Mateo Building and Construction Trade Council is comprised of 25 unions, construction unions and 16,000 highly skilled men and women, many of which lived in your community and Menlo Park and your neighboring community in East Palo Alto. And I'm here to ask the developer to get ahold of the Building and Trade Council and commit to the construction workers that live here locally. And I'm here to ask the developer to get ahold of the Building Trade Council and commit to the construction workers that live here locally. Hiring local construction workers reduces admissions in the trips traveled to and from the job site. It would allow members of your city and neighboring cities in San Mateo County work to work close to their homes and on good construction projects. Every dollar earned in a construction project creates $5 of stimulated economy in the surrounded area. And one of the ways this developer could do that, be in a good community partner, local developers, by committing to a community workforce agreement. Community workforce agreements sets wages, standards, and conditions. Ensures no lost time disruption on the job site from labor unrest due to contract or other unfair labor practices. And we encourage the contractor to commit to a community workforce agreement that brings benefits back to the community by hiring local contractors, local workers, highly skilled men and women that fund their own education through the apprenticeship program to ensure building projects right the first time, on time, on budget. And again, having a local workforce community here in San Mateo County. Here in San Mateo County already established, it would be to the advantage of the city as well as the developer to reach one of these agreements with our council. Or simply write us a letter of intent stating that they will hire local contractors, local workers, returning veterans through a help us to hard hat program. And we would enjoy the partnership with them. I would like to thank you for having this public process and study session and allow me to speak on behalf of the 16,000 highly skilled men and women. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised, Mr. Pruder?
At this moment, I do not see any others, Chair Doran.
Let's give her just a moment. If anyone else wants to comment, this is their chance. No hands raised?
Correct, no hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment on the study session and bring in the topic back up to the dais for questions and comments from the commission. Do we have anyone that would like to speak at this time? Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Chair Doran. I will start my comment by saying, board, we spent some time on the previous 1125 O'Brien and I think we had a lovely project prior. We had a, a well-designed, well-thought-out project prior to it. So after I make my comment, I'd love to hear from the developer what changed between then and now. What was the impetus for for the redesign and in particular, taking away the parking garage. I think removing the parking garage is the, is the opposite direction which we want to go in. It increases surface parking. Now, there's a, there's a constant here. The, the, the moving object is not necessarily, we have ratios, you know, parking ratios that were in the what we discussed for the first project and assuming, you know, the, knowing that those were pushed and assuming there still may be a little bit of room in that, but for like and similar parking ratios, you know, the ability to build a garage, reduce surface parking, reuse that area for something else and then potentially repurpose the parking garage over the longer term. It's, it's, you know, depending on how it's designed, there are some opportunities to, as demand goes down, repurpose a garage for other uses. There are portions of it. It's not easy, but it's doable. And I think we discussed it in relation, both shared parking it for this. If I remember correctly, shared parking at that parking garage for other projects as well. So vertical parking certainly is much more preferable to me than horizontal parking. So two questions, if you, if, if I could to the applicant, one, what changed? What was the impetus? And two, if they could expand a little bit more about the thesis behind the parking garage going away, please.
If I may speak on behalf of our team. The parking garage, the request for the parking garage to be reduced and moved back was the original request from the planning commission when we came to you two years ago. And the ability to move the garage back and actually have a garage that functions wasn't possible because you have ramp slopes in the garage that require a certain length. So that was the reason that the garage was as close to the street as it was when we originally designed it. And then the opportunity that we found was to look at an adjacent lot. So originally, our parking garage had, I think it was 2.5 per thousand. That's the max parking we can have in this zone. And what we've looked at is reducing that. So we now have a 1.8 per thousand parking area. We've increased the green space around there. So we've added more public open space around that parking space and around our building in order to make that more of an appealing site. The, their lower impact from construction if we don't build a parking garage. And we have a potential, if there isn't a structure there in the future, to actually repurpose that if we're able to decrease the parking even more. What Tarleton does with their shuttle program is they respond to their tenants. So they're responding directly to what people are looking for in shuttles. And they're able to increase and decrease the number of shuttle runs based on the number of people using the public transit system. So we are always hoping to reduce that and keep our parking as low as possible. We have on-site, Tarleton does, I'm speaking from an architect on behalf of the developer, but we've worked together for many years and we have many shared car, bicycle and car rental opportunities on the property that we've used over the years to try and keep our parking, you know, our drive to traffic as low as possible.
So to the chair, if I may. So are the parking ratios as contemplated for the new building less than what had been contemplated from the old building? And did I hear that they reduced from 2.5 to 1.8? Is that correct? And that's, that's through the chair to Ms. McGregor.
It's a question for the applicant.
Oh, thank you. Yes, it is. We have reduced from 2.5 to 1.8 parking ratios. We have reduced the quantity of available parking spaces for this site.
Now that is good. And what has changed? We, we have, you know, in the past, we've lengthy discussions about how far can we push down that parking ratio? What changed between then and now? And what are the trends that made this possible?
We've been, on each project that we work on, we work with a traffic consultant and we're trying what we can to reduce those numbers. We don't know exactly what we can get the numbers to. Our hope is that on this project, we can bring it down to this low and that this will work for this building. Each time we're just trying to bring it down. I don't know that we have an answer for the exact number. Currently on our sites in some of the other buildings, we're finding that the parking counts are closer to 2.5 per thousand for the building. So this is our response in trying to bring those numbers down with different types of transportation to these sites. Not sure if I answered your question.
And is that generally applicable, you're seeing across a portfolio of Tarleton properties?
At this point, we are, yeah. There's, I don't know if I can digress a little bit into, so there, the when you look at lead for all these buildings, which is a requirement in Menlo Park, which is wonderful. The lead requirement in order to get credit for public transportation is a huge number of bus trips. And we can't support that in Menlo Park. You don't want to have empty buses running all the time. So our response has been to increase the shuttles to make this work. And we think that that's been an effective way to get more people to our sites without single car trips. On your, did you want to add to this?
Looks like your lips are moving, but you're on mute.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Doran, Planning Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ron Creedemeyer. I'm the chief operating officer for Tarleton Properties. I just wanted to, to add a little bit to what Elka McGregor was saying about our parking. And so, so the, the parking ratio in most of our buildings, as, as you may or may not know, all of our buildings either are, are, are going to be life science buildings. So they are all medical device, diagnostic, biopharma, manufacturing buildings. And, and by the, the nature of that use, they have significantly lower occupancy levels than say an office building by way of example. So our, our, our buildings are all occupied. And they vary a little bit. It depends on the, the nature of, of the research and our manufacturing that's going on inside of the building. But, but we do do parking studies across our entire portfolio, which is just north of a million square feet, 23 buildings. And we do that on a regular basis. And the, the life science portion of those buildings, some of them are still similar to these. There's some industrial product in there that hasn't been converted yet. But, but those buildings are all occupied at somewhere between 1.8 and, and 2.3, 2.4 per thousand. Depending on what's going on inside the building. So gene therapy, for example, small labs, you know, they, they have a little more bioinformatics type work going on. So they have more people sitting at desks. And so they're, they'll have a little bit lower lab to office ratio than, than say, you know, a medical device, a stent manufacturer or something like that. And so, you know, we do have an aggregate of space. And, and just to be completely transparent with everyone, the, the removal of the garage was in response to many comments we received at the last planning commission, we were in the interim successful in getting control of the one KC court parcel, which has allowed us to surface park. And so, you know, we were trying to respond to, to some planning commission feedback that we received. The, the control we got over the one Casey site allowed us to surface park. It does allow us to get that to a lower parking ratio. And, and gives us some flexibility, you know, in, in terms of our, all of our other properties and, and the various, the various other sites that we have to sort of aggregate parking a little bit. So that's, that's really where it came from. You know, we, honestly, we were looking for our pat on the head tonight for getting rid of the garage on the O'Brien frontage. That's okay, though. We'll, we'll look forward from something else. But, no, the, the, but largely other than that, the project hasn't, the building architecture, the building design is, is essentially the same. We did change some materials and, and things like that and, and some color palettes. But, and Elka can probably get into some more of the details of that stuff. But, and we did, we did work hard to respond to some comments from staff and aggregate as we indicated that, that publicly accessible open space towards O'Brien Drive to, to make, you know, that space more usable and more inviting to, to the public as, as they are traversing O'Brien Drive.
Got it. Thank you. And I will say that, you know, this project, the recent middle deserves a stand on its own and I don't want to over litigate the past project. My recollection is different as it relates to the parking garage and the comments on it. And I don't have a recollection of it going away being a better idea. I mean, if we made, there are savings in the parking ratio, which is phenomenal. I would rather see that recycled into a shared parking garage across multiple properties in one stacked environment. And that is my thought. That however, you know, will not be my review of this project because this project will stand alone. So those are my comments. And thank you for unwinding how we got here. I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Do we have other comments from the commission? Mr. Riggs.
Yeah, thank you. I would, I would like to get some clarity on the locations of not just the bike parking, but the shower and changing rooms presumably adjacent. I'd also like to talk about the shuttle waiting area. The potential for gray water system and the potential for alternatives to the heat island of this full-size lot. And then finally, like to talk about the viability of a fully electric building in biosciences. So having thrown all that at you as a, as a table of contents, contents, I guess we'll, we'll talk about the bicycle amenities. And through the chair, I guess I would be addressing that to Ms. McGregor.
Thanks, Commissioner Riggs. The bicycle parking is currently a room, a full-size room in the building that responds to the LS zoning requirements. And the showers and locker rooms are on the main floor adjacent to that location. The door to that bicycle parking is directly off of the parking lot. And you can access that through an employee entrance or through the main entrance. In addition to the long-term bicycle parking in the building, there is short-term parking for bicycles in racks in front of the building.
Wonderful. Someone has clearly thought about this.
Big bicyclists on this team.
I heard something about that.
Like you, we spend a lot of time on our bikes.
And then the shuttle waiting area, it looks just like open space. Once in a great while, we get rain in Menlo Park, but more significantly, we get sun, you know, just unrelenting sun. Not so much this summer and actually not that much last summer, but it will return. And will there be a shade structure or, or something for, even if people are waiting for the shuttle only 15 minutes or maybe even only 10?
Currently, we have a lot of landscaping that is designed around that front area there. So a lot of trees, a lot of variety of trees, and they are in maturity. I think we're going to have a lot of shade, natural shade there, Commissioner Riggs. We were hesitating to build a structure because I think I need to get back to you on exactly the details. But I think there was a concern about overhangs and that impeding into that area because the sidewalk, the actual city sidewalk curves out around that area. And I'm not sure if we can build over top of the sidewalk without impeding it in some way.
Typically in Menlo Park, you can. I don't remember if the height is 10 feet. It's in that range.
Okay.
And it's a number of feet that you can come out over a sidewalk. And I don't remember again, maybe it's four feet. So the rest would be back of that. Yeah, I'll let you check with your planner, but you're, you're obviously addressing the issue.
We'd prefer to address it with planting than with a shade structure. Because the shade structure is just one more building structure along O'Brien Drive that we'd like to mitigate if possible.
I can think of reasons to do that. So I understand. Is a gray water system included in the project proposal?
Thank you for asking. Yes, it is. We have, there's no gray water to the site yet. But the site will incorporate purple pipe for the future of gray water. And we have met with West Bay San Perry District several times in a larger group and also just individually as Tarleton Properties to discuss bringing gray water to this site. And we will have it here as soon as it is available and we are ready for it when it arrives.
Fantastic. And then in terms of the parking lot as a heat And then in terms of the parking lot as a heat island, it's an odd of square footage.
Yeah, I hear you. And we have shade trees as much as we can around the perimeter as well as on islands throughout the parking area. One of the reasons for putting the, the green island in between Casey Court parking and the parking that's adjacent to 1125 was also to bring in another green element into that and provide some shade relief for that area. We we've done what, as much as we can to bring plants into this. And our landscape team loves how much plant we had, plant material we have on site here. I don't know if we could increase it anymore to cover the parking area.
Well, you always can, but I don't know if the numbers will work out.
Yes.
All right. So you're not going to be planting olives and crepe myrtle. You're going to be planting actual canopy trees.
We have there's a, there's some heritage tree replacements that are going in to the center areas. I don't have an exact. I'd have to go and look at a different sheet to get that material. But yes, they are, there are larger shade trees going into all of that parking area, Commissioner Riggs.
I will say from the plan that's not a lot of trees. I mean, there are probably 25% of spaces where the, the people that get their first will park. And the, the rest will just be baking locations. And again, I realize that it can be a challenge, although it, it does look that by using the diamond planters, you are able to get intermediate trees. So I would encourage, I mean, you know, lacking another level of response, say to Mr. Barnes' comments, I would encourage that you find a way to get notably more trees for that for that area. And I think I had one final thing. Oh. No doubt you're also aware that Menlo Park, well, not only in the connect Menlo rezoning, but we're now even looking at residential, even existing residential structures, deleting gas service and relying entirely on electrical. You know, Charlton Properties has made a determination about the capacity and reliability of electrical service to provide for their tenants. I say this in the context, I mean, there's more to be said outside of this meeting, but the state of California is not increasing its electrical capacity in terms of the grid. It's actually decreasing it. It's decreasing hydro, it's decreasing gas, it's decreasing nuclear. And we are all intending on increasing our dependence on it. And you don't need to save clippings in a scrapbook to know that PG&E's reliability has suffered. So this is an opportunity, or, or at least I'm making the invitation for Charlton Properties and perhaps I should be addressing this to Anthony or the other gentleman to say if gas service is needed for this kind of industry. It sort of has to be said. Or perhaps it's not needed.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Riggs. I will address that. I, I agree with your assessment that the energy requirements for the state of California are, are perennially increasing while the state of California's energy output is perennially decreasing. In terms of our use, we have discussed all electric life science projects with several, several different contractors and engineers. And while they are today theoretically possible, the additional electrical load that, that the heating provides, you know, that would, the, the heating would require is going to require a number of, of things that are trade-offs, honestly. And, and not just trade-offs, but, but also problematic from an engineering standpoint. Right now, the gas system is, is considerably more reliable than, than the electrical system. I was a tenant in Menlo Park. I was John Charlton's tenant for almost 10 years with five different life science startups before John hired me. And so I'm, I'm very familiar with the long-term history of how the power behaves out there. And I can tell you that when I was a tenant in the early and, and mid and late 2000s, we would maybe see a, a power anomaly or a rolling blackout once every two years. I think, I think I really saw two or three the entire time I was there. They are multiple times a year now. And, and so life science companies have a lot of sensitive equipment that can be affected by brownouts. They have a lot of very expensive material. And, and so if you take the gas away and you put the whole building on, on electrical power, then essentially you're trying to control the heating and cooling and control the temperature in a bunch of spaces that have temperature requirements. So there are human samples in there. There are, there are people's human samples in there that are being tested in some, in many cases in our, in our tenants' buildings. And so it's, it's a human's sample that is getting tested to say, yes, they have cancer, no, they don't have cancer. And it, and, and to make the buildings less reliable puts those things at risk. And, and until the engineering catches up and honestly, until PG&E figures out how to fix itself, we're just not comfortable adding, you know, or, or lessening the reliability of our buildings. Most life science users look for more reliability, frankly. The trade-off would be, would be other systems. It would be larger generator sets to, to accommodate temperature control and things like that, so that you can maintain control in these laboratories where these experiments are going on. So if somebody's samples running in an instrument and that instrument has a 70 degree plus or minus, you know, five degree Fahrenheit or four degree Fahrenheit requirement. And if it goes out of, out of that band, then, then the samples that are being run are, are no good. That might be the only sample you have from that person. And so then you're, you're going back to the well and, and trying to figure out how to solve for that problem. That person then doesn't get a result. And I think if we've learned anything in the past year and a half, that, that matters. And so we were, we're going to say that yes, we, we need gas right now. We have, as I said, talked to several engineering firms and several very smart engineers, including folks at Western Allied, who, who all say the same thing. It's theoretically possible. And, and it can be done. And the, the sort of gold standard for it can be done is a building on the Berkeley campus that is an all-electric life science university building. And I stressed university, it's not a commercial laboratory. But, but I would also like to point out that the electricity for the UC Berkeley campus comes from 100% from a gas-fired co-gen plant on that campus. So that building is gas-powered, but it's a, it's a cool story that they like to put out there. But regardless, you know, the, the gas systems that help control the temperature in those spaces are important for the use that's in the space for material storage, for equipment that's running samples. And so we believe that we, we do need to continue to have the more reliable access to gas for our heating and cooling systems. We, we typically in critical spaces, the, the fans and in many cases, the compressors on the HVAC systems are hooked up to an emergency generator so that if the power does go out, the compressor will keep running, the fan will keep running, we'll get cooling. But the, the additional, the additional load of the, the heating, because it's, I'm not sure how, if there's any engineers in the room, but the, the, the additional load from the, the heating elements, because they're resistive, would be substantial. And, and so the generators would be sized in such a way that it's not really feasible for us to use them to use, you're talking about a multi-megawatt diesel generator set in that case. That is, that is, you know, just not feasible for the site and, and obviously has its own issues, the bigger they get. So we do believe that we would like to continue to, we need to continue to use gas for our use until the engineering world and PG&E can come up with a more reliable alternative for life science.
All right. I can see I have come upon a key question. Is the proposal for your building as it stands, does that include gas service?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I don't doubt that you realize our city, including me, takes the shift from fossil fuels seriously. I just want to make sure I don't make the philosophically rigid mistake of asking at the wrong time in the wrong place. I was going to ask just how big your generators can be in order to cover that. And you unfortunately have just told me. And I won't press the battery question because I know battery storage isn't there yet, although I think we hope it will be in just a few years. And then I'll just check in through the chair. If I could just check with staff.
Yes, certainly.
And Mr. Prada, I just wanted to verify that we are, the city is okay with the life science building having the gas service that they depend on.
So thank you for that question. The, the city's reach codes do allow for life science uses to appeal to the building official for the use of natural gas for building operations systems such as HVAC, heating, cooling, kind of its core system. So that, that is a pathway for the applicant to reach out or to apply that the building official would ultimately review and, and determine to issue an exemption for that.
Is that something one has to wait until permit level in order to find out?
You know, that's a really good question. I don't know, but I, I believe it is intended to be with the building permits middle, not necessarily during the use permit review that we're in now. Certainly the applicant can begin that conversation, I believe, but I can, I can follow up with you separately if you're interested.
Having done large projects, including medical myself, I, I know that the applicant will not want to wait to spend five or six million in development fees in order to find out whether it's legal or not, but I will leave that to those of you who work the process. All right. That, that was a big question and a big answer, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
We have other commissioners that would like to speak at this time. Not seeing anyone. Commissioner Cardy.
Thank you. Thanks for the great presentation and the discussion so far. I have a question that I guess starts with you own 1140 Kitty Corner across the street. Is that correct?
Correct.
So walk through the deed restriction on height and why you want to make that calculation between these two properties and what do you envision with 1140 in the future then?
1140 O'Brien Drive. Thank you for the question. 1140 O'Brien Drive is is a, a building that was acquired. I was in, previously I believe an industrial building. Our firm acquired it prior to my being here. But it, it was converted to a life science use in the late 2000s, 2008, I believe. And, and so it is in the, the later stages of, of its, obviously its life. I believe it was constructed, that building originally in the 60s. So that, that, that building, while, you know, we do have tenants in there and we do have leases. You know, eventually that building will reach its end of life and we simply will not be able to to update that building and make it work within the code anymore. And, and eventually it will not work for our use anymore. And I believe that building is only 20, something like 23 feet high now. Somewhere in that range. And so the, the 35 feet, it still allows us to increase the height of the building to get better clear height and potentially a two-story structure on that side of O'Brien Drive. We wouldn't be able to go much higher than that anyway. I believe that's the, the height limit on that side of the street because it abuts the residential. And so, you know, we, we will eventually take 1140 O'Brien Drive down. Ultimately, I'm built a new building there or whether it's there or, or, you know, and, and we get lucky and, and get control of the site next to it on either side. And, and we're able to, to, you know, combine that site and build a newer building there. Eventually we, it will happen. As I said, that building is, is, you know, 50 plus years old and concrete tilt buildings are reaching their end of life around that time. So.
Thank you. Then I, I, through the chair, I have a question for Principal Planner Peralta then. How are we supposed to think about the linkages of these two properties? And, and what's the, what's the benefit to this project relative to exactly what is being given up with the deed restriction on 1140 for this owner or a future owner? If I, if I understand the answer, it's the deed, with or without the deed restriction, it's essentially the same use of the property is pretty much what it sounded like. So I, I I don't understand the linkage then, or how are we supposed to consider that linkage of one property in our community being diminished in its future use to be able to maximize so that this property can? What's, how do we think about that trade-off?
So it's a good question. Let me start backing up a little bit. So as the staff report lays out with regard to the, the height, what we're talking about here is the effectively, what is the average height between the two parcels or, or multiple parcels here, but the project main site and the applicant's request to use the lower height at the the 1140 O'Brien Drive project or parcel to kind of get to the average height in compliance with the zoning. That is allowed through kind of the linkage through a use permit. A deed restriction would be placed on the 1140, limiting the maximum height. We are still, as the staff report lays out, figuring out what that max height can be. Staff is not, needs to look at the 35 feet, if it can really go to that height, or if it has to be a lower height to balance it out. So we're still running those calculations, cross-checking to determine what that de-restriction would be. Ultimately, it's a, it's a question for the planning commission on whether or not the use of the master plan allowance that's in the zoning ordinance to share development potential across multiple parcels is appropriate here in terms of potentially limiting the future development at the 1140 site for the current project on the 1125 O'Brien Drive site.
All right. That's helpful. I just, I don't know why I have to go into much more detail now. It's sort of theoretical at the moment, but as this moves forward, it'd be great to. I, I'm perfectly happy. Please go ahead and, and add.
I, 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 I think I, maybe I, I didn't answer the question. So I think that, that the, the benefit is, would be that 1140 O'Brien Drive, regardless of whether it's that building in its current form or a future building would in fact, regardless of whatever else happens with zoning, be, be limited to that 35 foot height limit in perpetuity. So by way of example, if in the future the zoning changes that limit to 50 feet, well, that building would still in fact be limited to 35 feet. If we were to take the current 1140 down and come back with a new building in the future. So I think that's, if there's a, a benefit, I think. So I think that's, if there's a benefit, I think that's really the benefit. It does, it does restrict it via the deed in perpetuity.
Yeah, that's helpful. I just, just playing that through and being crisp through this whole process as this project moves forward would be good. And it it is sort of related on this question, and this gets to thinking through the open space and the community amenity and the the commercial, the public serving commercial space. How do you think about that property relative to the rest of the community in the neighborhood? So one of the things that's happened, I think, since the last time you came to Planning Commission is at least some greater understanding of a potential that goes on Bayside from you for the Facebook development and how they're thinking about mixed-use development. You've got the Mid Peninsula High School on one side, you've got another school and and facilities for the community on the other side. And then you are really close, although there is essentially a wall separating you from a whole bunch of residents that are backing up to 1140. So walk through how you you think about and how we should think about utilization and the activation of your space, given that you're sort of right at the center of not just sort of moving along O'Brien, that's actually not it as much as crossing O'Brien in these multiple ways, given all of the mixed uses that are so close.
The the schools and these buildings, I think, I I'm not sure about timing, but I'm guessing, so the business park has been there for, is it 35 years, Ron? And I'm not sure how long the schools have been there. I know that the mid, the school at the Charter School on the Willow Drive or Willow Road was, I believe, previously probably an industrial use building. I'm not exactly sure what it was, but those have grown at the same time that the business park has grown. And what the Planning Commission has been working to do with the Connect Menlo and with the new zoning is to ensure that the buildings don't jump up drastically from the residential side. So that's part of what they've been trying to do with keeping the structures on the side that abuts the residential at 35 feet and build it up higher on the other side of the street. I'm not sure if that speaks to some of your your comment.
I think it's helpful. I would I would just say I kind of look at it the other way, which is, you know, there you you go back much further than 35 years, and there's a reason this community has been all hodgepodge together. It's a set of folks that didn't have political power and so ended up getting parceled up and carved up in ways that the rest of our community didn't, certainly on the West Side. And so I think there's actually a really great opportunity to acknowledge and recognize this mixed use and the activation of a community that has people going to school, has residents in this mix and potentially is going to have a mixed use that goes in, it's going to be much higher end on the other side. And to see yourselves as a corridor between those. And so as you think about the public space, there's one way to think about the space, which is just in the sort of narrow sense about who's strolling by and sees out front. But there's a longer term here, which is, and I will now do a segue, is I'm thrilled, the pat on the back or whatever you asked for on this, I'm absolutely 100%. I'll I'll cheer up and down that you got rid of the parking garage and that right now you have surface parking. Because the goal is to get rid of the service parking over time so that you can then activate that space in some other kind of way. Well, setting it up right now, like planting commissioner rigs his trees so that they are there 20 years from now, not just to shade a car, but actually to be inviting for people in the community to connect what is right now, this unbelievable chasm that exists within four or five blocks would be an extraordinary benefit for forward-looking and thinking that through. So for me, it would be great to see how you all think about this project in terms of fitting your needs now. Your excellent work that you've been doing in order to drive down the need for parking, find other ways for people to get to the office, that sort of question. But then to think about that to that next step, as you redesign 1140 over time, as you think about what that parking turns into, you could be a great benefit to this community. Or you could design this so that it is this massive roadblock that only reinforces the bifurcation that already exists. So I just, as you move forward with your plans, if I just really encourage you to think about it as what an incredible opportunity for this to actually be a linkage across this important area of our community as opposed to an island that's in there. And so I think that starts to get to questions about what's the service? Is it a cafe or is it a store of some sort that does both? You could actually get food, but you could also buy food and take away in that mix. And as you think about the community amenity, which is going to come through on this, what's that going to look like from the list? Talk to the community a ton about who's right nearby and what they need in that mix. And I think that's going to be crucial in all of this. So I just really want to reinforce that point. And then the the last thing I'd like to come back to is, I just really want to commend the city for adopting a reach code that puts Menlo Park on the front edge of what absolutely needs to happen in this community in the world, which is reducing our dependence on fossil fuels, but also is very recognizing of where we are now, of unique needs and interests, and being able to have a mechanism to be able to assure that those can be utilized as our whole world moves through this transition. And so I think I really appreciated that last exchange and appreciated that we've got a mechanism for that appeal to be able to utilize a resource that may be crucial for this particular use. On the exchange with Mr. Riggs, just more broadly, though, about the supply and demand issue in California, I think it is really worth, as you all have been a leader about how you think through all aspects of your environmental footprint, for you to continue to be so in this mix. The reason we don't have hydro, of course, is because we've been putting the emissions from so much methane, gas and other resources into the atmosphere. And so the answer cannot be to essentially continue to cycle us down into this untenable position. And the supply-demand is also deeply connected to grid and grid resilience, which is also impacted. So it's a lot more complicated issue and much more nuanced in this mix. But I will leave it at there for purposes of letting us get out of here tonight. And then I think just the last thing is that the project itself, I think it's a really beautiful building. I do wonder about the scale relative to the community. As you think about neighbors and people walking by, and I appreciate you've nodded towards the walkability and the activation of people outside, and we'll just continue to lean into that as this is further refined and comes so that it really does, as a fairly tall building, have a look and feel that fits into the community that is uniquely in this neighborhood as opposed to as you move elsewhere on Bay on Bayside. So those will be my comments for this evening, and thank you.
You, sure, Cardi. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
Tricks. Uncharacteristically, I've said virtually nothing about the building, and it's a major building that will be very thoroughly visible, including from the residential areas of the southeast and I think, as always, DES comes up with a very refined and nuanced building. I am curious about the oh, the, like, just the flying shade that is above the top story and connects the two anchor blocks of the building. In the rendering, it looks like it's this incredible mass of a stuccoed surface where I think perhaps it's an opportunity for a lighter material, lighter in appearance and function, and maybe air resistance next time we get a 60 mile an hour gust. So I I was just curious about the choice and whether that's fixed.
The actual material is very thin. It's a structural frame that sheath with metal cladding that is similar to the metal cladding that is around the entrance. So the the materials complement each other. And it does provide a shading, a partial shade structure on the top floor and an architectural element that really ties the curve of the facade together. And what we wanted to do is really respond to that corner property location and be able to respond to how the street curves there. So we've set the building back. It gives you a little bit more visibility around the corner, driving there, and also gives you the opportunity to have this huge patio or area in front of the cafe.
I think I'm going to have to see it when it's built and and see how well it works. So I will look forward to that.
Thanks for your nice comments about DES. Much appreciated.
Of course, earned.
Okay. I'll ask Mr. Prada if he's got the input that he needs at this point. Or if there are specific questions you'd like the commission to address.
So the for the purpose of the study session, staff doesn't have specific questions. There were some prompting questions in the staff report to help guide the commission. Those certainly, I think, were discussed in different aspects tonight throughout the study session. So it's certainly up to the commission if you wanted to discuss any more of those prompting questions that the staff put together to help guide the discussion. Ultimately, if there are no other comments or questions, we certainly can end it here for the evening.
Yep. Okay, I think I'm going to call for, last call for comments from the commission. We don't have anything else. I'm going to move on. Okay, I'm going to close the study session at this time. Have one more item on the agenda under regular business. Determination of substantial conformance for 879 Partridge Avenue. Review of staff determination and removal of chimney and window door alterations are in substantial conformance of the previous approval. So as I understand, this went to the commission previously, the email. And if no one wanted to talk about it, yeah, it wasn't going to be on our agenda, but it's in our agenda. So I think someone must have asked to have this put on the agenda. Is that correct, in Sanmar?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, also, I see from the emails that one of our commissioners, Commissioner Harris, has recused, no, Commissioner Kennedy recused himself on this one. So I see that she's turned off her camera and it's on mute. So what's the procedure on this? We don't have a report. Do we ask for questions on the staff report on the attachment or I'm I'm not really familiar how we handle these kinds of.
Yeah, well, I have some quick updates first, and then normally the applicant doesn't give a presentation, but the homeowner would like to give a short presentation if the commission would find that useful.
Okay, so you have some updates first.
Yes, that's right. And so unfortunately, there were some drafting errors that staff found out about after the memo was sent out. The first is that both the existing bay window and the proposed box window and awning over the front door should have been shown with standing seam metal as the roofing material. So in other words, the proposed roofing material for that awning and the box window is also standing seam metal. And the second error is that the sill height shown on the second floor, rear bedroom, should have been shown as 24 inches from that well, that second floor, finished floor, and not 18 inches. So those are the two updates. And that concludes my remarks, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the Sanmar? Okay, I don't see any. I think I would like to hear from the applicant if they want to speak. I'd like to give them the opportunity to do that. So we have some.
Yes, excuse me, Chair Doran, I believe we do have a representative for the applicant team now. And I believe they have the ability to speak, so if they may do so now, I believe we can proceed.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to speak? Yes, you're on.
Okay, and I have a PowerPoint I think that they were going to put on. I submitted in advance. Is it Corinne?
Yeah, so through the chair, I think Vaughn is working on getting that out. So it should just be a moment.
Okay.
I can introduce myself in the meantime. I'm, so you can hear me, you said, right?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Okay, can you see me as well? No?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I am Vera Tirofsky. My husband and I have lived in this house for 30 years. I raised two sons. And we really haven't done much to the house, actually, in in all that time. I think it was, you know, well-designed and suited us. But we are now getting older. And so prompting this really was looking ahead at both sort of our health needs. Here it is. That really was a big part of it, and I guess there were other things. Okay, is this, okay, let me see. It's, is this big enough for all of you or?
Looks good to me.
Okay. And the other is that, however, the house was laid out and designed, it gets literally no direct sunlight except into this, into the laundry room and the master bath. And so we have the lights on almost all the time and have the heat three quarters of the year. So it's it's really, really bothersome. And and so we think we can do better. So basically, our goal, let's go to slide number two. Do I have control over this slide? Oh, here it is. Sorry. Okay, sorry. More consistent colonial style. I think we can do better on the outside. It's a very attractive house. You get a compliment all the time. But I think we can kind of, there are some pieces that actually don't fit the colonial style. And we definitely want to make it safer for us as we get older, as I mentioned, and better utilization of the space, more natural light and better energy. The house was designed, obviously, when, you know, every room was well-defined and sort of enclosed, and it doesn't really meet our current needs. There is a, the the primary floor plan of the downstairs where most of the changes are going, and it's in your packet. So I was still about to spend too much time, but the controversy or issue is this fireplace. Since we're making one great room, we want to remove this so that we could see into the yard and make this one nice set of sliding glass doors. And if it's one room, we don't need two fireplaces. And the other thing is that we're raising the living room floor in order to create. So we would, we have to basically either completely redo the fireplace or or take it out. So with that, I basically went through most of that. The other, so what else we're doing is we are going to convert the half bath to a full bath. So again, that's kind of thinking ahead so that in the future, the way that we're redesigning the the dining room, it could be converted to a bedroom. It will have sliding doors, bucket doors on each side. So that should we need a downstairs bedroom over the years, when my parents were quite old, it was, we, they could never spend the night for all those reasons. So we're thinking ahead. And we also think that, talking about the natural gas situation, we, it is currently a natural gas fireplace, and we could cap off that natural gas and we could remove the masonry and sort of make it safer, we think, both in terms of earthquake and, you know, reduction of, you know, gas. So what do we think? And, oh, I missed it. My house, oh, here, my house from the outside. So I just wanted to say that we we want to keep the house looking as nice from the outside as the city does. Because that's the feedback we got that, you know, you wanted to make sure it looked nice and symmetrically unbalanced. As I said, we get a lot of compliments, but I think that when you really think about it, there's some things that could be improved. And I'll go through the list here, but the current house, and I'll show you later too, is neither symmetrical or consistent with the consistent, with the colonial style. The front door doesn't align with the dormers. I'll show you that. The front door neither is, you know, equidistant from the side of windows on the left or the right. The height of the living room windows, unfortunately, did, were not, did not get installed according to the plan. We never quite realized it, but they're super low and and actually kind of unbalances the house. It's it's always been another odd thing. I think the bay window, it's nice to have a bay window. We actually use the window seat a lot, but I think it's not really what you would call colonial style. And the thing that bugs me, I guess, also about the look is that the the windows on the first floor are different style than the windows on the second floor. And the one or one is double-hunged, one is casement, and we leave our windows open all year round virtually. And so it's quite obvious. So so here the so here the, here's the dormers. I want, here's where it shows you the, sort of the, you've got the front door at this height, you've got these doors in the, I mean, the windows in the living room at a much lower height compared to the other window on the bay. And then you see the dormer. The door is not centered, either under the dorm or equidistant between the dormers. And it's an interesting thing. I think the house is attractive and it comes together, and I never was quite clear why it didn't seem to 100% hang together until I stepped back and, you know, for remodel projects, but it currently is not symmetrical. All right, the other thing is that here are the two different kinds of windows. As you can see, these clearly come out as very modern and these, and these more traditional. And I, and I also put this slide up to see that there's ample room to put taller windows in the dormer. And the reason why we want to put the, well, I'll get to the windows later, so I'm jumping ahead here. Okay, yeah, so. Sorry, I did this one out. Okay, the portico. So one of the things that we've added is a portico over the front door. One is to sort of bring the highlight front entrance and kind of get away from it, the house's imperfections. But also, we, we, you know, when it rains, which isn't very often, especially the last few years, but we, you know, we don't have, you know, anywhere as a guest wait for them to sort of be protected. So anyhow, we, so we thought that some of these changes, we, you know, by adding attractive, also carriage lights and shrubbery, you know, would, would add also to attractiveness and symmetry in the future design. So, so here, here's the sort of future look with the taller windows in, in the dark, in the dormers. And, and then the, the metal seamed roof lines over both what's now a box window versus what we had before bay window, but it had the same kind of roof and then over the front door. And really, I think that visually is where your, your eye will go. So that's the look. It's the look without the chimney on the left side. So, okay, I'll go down to the next one. So we talked about the, the areas. Okay, the dormer windows, I've already talked about them. I wanted to just show you again the exterior. The dormers are actually kind of squat. They're very large dormers, but so I think that it improved the look, and it was interesting. I'm working with a designer and she, she actually said, oh, those windows, what's wrong? The house looks so different. Looks real, whatever we've changed already, and it was just changing the size of those windows that she thought made the house look a lot better. But here's the inside look of what the dormers look like. And I think first of all, you can see there's a lot of space to put a taller window, but also they're almost undersized really for the size of the dormer on the inside, and it makes for these very dark bedrooms. They're adding again to this sort of lack of natural light darkness that sort of haunts the house, I'm gonna say. So. Okay, removal of the second chimney. Well, if you look at the drawings that were in Ari's and the staffs, you'll see that we have trees in front of our house all the way across, and so you almost don't see the chimneys at any, at any time, and you never see the two chimneys, but it really doesn't add anything to the appearance of the house. And, and later you'll see the side view and with a very asymmetrical roof line, it, it, it too is, it doesn't fit. And two, two fireplaces in one room, as I discussed, is sort of odd, and if we don't have it, then that's truly gonna affect the functionality of those rooms and the light. And then we talked about the earthquake and natural gas. So here's the side view again without the chimney, because the chimney currently is here. And I think, you know, with this, this very tall, we have very gabled tall roof, there's plenty of space for, you know, the taller windows as well as, you know, the good-sized patio doors. Now, how does it really look from the outside today? This is outlooks. You can see that the chimney just is overwhelming, and frankly, I don't think does anything to that for the look of the house as well as the function. And this is what it looks like from my neighbor's porch standing. Our neighbors have a one-story house. They're on actually super substandard lot. And between the, the shrubs, standing from their, their porch, this is what you see, very tippy top of the roof line and actually the one chimney. So, you know, taking the chimney down or whatever windows we put is not gonna bother or make any difference to them. So anyway, in summary, I think the open plan facilitates aging in place, especially with evening out the floors. We have the potential of the dining room conversion to a bedroom in case of a disability. We have double hung windows throughout, which we think goes with the colonial style and also is better for leaving the windows open all year. But if you have case the windows, if you leave them, they get weather beaten, and so hours are in really poor shape, and they're also difficult to clean. And then the removal of chimney allows for the full view of the rear garden and new taller sliding doors and windows allow for more natural light, which is, is really one of our wishes. So that's it.
Thank you. So maybe at this point we could open it up to questions from the commission, because I think someone asked to put this on the agenda, so they must have some questions or some reservations about the changes to the plans. So does someone have questions for the applicant, Commissioner Riggs?
Certainly, and just as a point of order, as a review, we're just going to confirm this isn't, we don't need to go to public comment for this, or is that not so?
Gonna have to consult the Senator on that.
I mean, that public comment may not be required, but I think it's useful just to open it in case someone wants to speak.
Okay, so let's, let's do that now. Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised?
Hello again, Chair Doran. I do not see any hands raised. Anyone would like to comment, they may press the hand icon. And again, if you're on the phone, press star nine, and we can wait a quick moment just to see if someone would like to speak.
Give a little time for that.
I do have supportive letters from my, 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 around the neighbors. Those that look at the front of the house and the side of the house across on University.
Any public comments?
Apologies there. I clicked the wrong button. I did not see any public comments, no hands raised. So if you'd like, you may proceed with me.
Okay, let's close public comment, and then we can bring it back to the audience for any questions for the applicant or any comments on, on the revisions to the, the application. Commissioner Riggs, I think you have the floor before.
Yes, and as the architect on the commission, I'm sure I'm the suspect, and I will immediately confess. I did ask that this be brought to the commission for review, and may I say to the project applicant, I very much appreciate your review of your logic, very extensive review, and the summary was quite helpful pinning down your goals. And certainly, you know, speaking for myself, I have no interest in making it more difficult for you to meet the goals of seeking an open plan, nor do we as community representatives, you know, have anything to say about interior planning. I think, I think we share that. And so your summary, which again, quite helpful, it lists, what is it, five or six goals? And I, I think none of them are actually harmed by the comments that I have to make, and, and they are architectural comments. I appreciate that you did speak to a designer, but particularly when you're working with, and I appreciate that you have your concern for a traditional style and keeping it. But that is not necessarily the easiest thing to judge for a designer. The colonial style does indeed at times have the offset pitch that some back east call assault box, offset roof pitch. All the traditional homes had more than one fireplace, and they weren't all needed. And your practicality, I think, overrules whether or not you keep a fireplace and, more importantly, a chimney that you simply don't want. And I appreciate your concern about the bay window and whether or not it belongs on a colonial. Although I personally am so used to the mix and match, it even became roughly 100 years ago, it became identified as part of California's style to traditional forms and misalign them. I can only say, the, the Romans did it before us. In particular, there's a church on Piazza Navona, which became quite famous for the fact that it directly mixed styles and offended a number of traditional leaders of the community. The, the issues that arise from this particular proposal are really just two. And to just lay them out simply, the windows inserted on the dormer are out of scale. They're not just out of scale for colonial, they're out of scale for any second story on top of a first story that actually has smaller windows than you're rendering. And the intention of matching up the image with double hung, unfortunately, was lost with the oversized windows and the square proportion, which look like farmhouse windows, except at a cartoon scale. And, and that's not a difficult thing to solve. I mean, your casement windows literally can be replaced with double hung. They could even be replaced with double hung that were a few inches higher. But the scale of what you propose is, is, I think the most polite thing I could say would be awkward. The, the best thing is that you are starting with such a charming existing house in spite of the naughty bay window. But if you really want to remove the bay window, the box window, I think, is a wonderful item to go to, except that it is so notably off-center. You have made a comment about the fact that the house was not symmetrical to begin with. Quite true. And the only solution to a colonial home would be literally to relocate the front entry. And nobody expects you to do that, and I don't think even an architect now or 100 years ago would expect you to do that. But the imbalance of the entry was made up for by the bay window. The fact that the bay window was chosen from the wrong toolbox actually got a pass because it worked, and it provided the balance, balance that the first floor facade needed. When you go to the box window, not only does it, in its size, not quite have the gravitas to do that, but it's put off-center. And that suddenly calls attention to the imbalance that would not have had anyone's attention before. So the, there are multiple things that I could suggest, but the, I think the things that are important to the community and the street are that the box window be centered in its space on its not-quite-half of the house, and that the dormer windows be in scale with the rest of the house. They certainly don't have to remain casements, and I sympathize. They could be direct replacement, double hung, and they could even be a few inches higher. I think that's important. I realized that the box window would not end up being in the center of the room. And you might even have the box window be a blank form that goes beyond the room in order to make it work in terms of balance. An architect can easily help you work this out in probably 20 minutes. And then in terms of the second floor rooms with the dormer windows, again, I sympathize with making them a few inches higher, although certainly not a foot higher, but the biggest difference you could make in those rooms would be to paint them white. And while that's something that you'll hear from an architect or a designer, almost in a flip manner, I have to say, the project that I repainted in November to white astounded even me at the difference it made, and we decided not to put in the skylight. But skylight happens to be an option for you even on a colonial. So I would like to request as a planning commissioner that you reconsider, most importantly, reconsider the sheer size of those dormer windows. Are we all looking at sheet B9?
Wait, before you do propose something, just let me tell you the background behind some of this, and then maybe we can come up with something sort of more mutual, because so what is it? What happened with the bay window? That was not taken out because of style. There is, the dining room is currently horizontal, and it's going to go vertical because the full bath is taking up part of the formal.
I did notice that the walls move and that therefore the bay window would be divided, and, but as I said, you can take the box window and make either a false window or a separate window in order to be able to preserve the balance of the home that you rightly recognize as a very strong architectural style. And it, it needs some effort.
Do you mean, you know that we were, we had to reduce the size of the box window because we were, we found out that because our, we have such a pitched roof, that there's parts of it that exceed the five foot and now account as built-out space. Therefore, the bay window would no longer be allowed to be rebuilt, and we were limited in the bay window, which we, I mean, the, the box window, which we wanted to make bigger. So if we could be given a variance on that, we'd be more than happy to make it bigger. I, I mean, I'd love to get more light. I'd like to make it a real seat like we have now. So I, I felt like we were constrained, and we had to reduce what we ideally wanted in order to meet codes. So that's, that's why I'd like some solution and direction. And on the bay windows, I was told by two different companies that in order to have double hung, this is the minimum size of a single window to meet fire egress in this day and age. And so that is actually one window. It is not two even. It's one, it went, it is one window, whereas not, we have the two casement. And so one other thought is that we, we could go back to making the living room windows, okay, the doors, the windows on the left side of the house larger. Okay, because because they were so low, and my husband felt that it was an infringement on our privacy, we shrunk them. And so I think that they are too small, so they could definitely be made at least the size of the garage or maybe bigger. I mean, they can be wider and, and taller if that's what it would take to really help that look. I'm really into, I mean, but I'm also really open to a bigger, I didn't go back to the bay window or a bigger box, but we, the, the bay window was not cantilevered. It was, you know, it had a, it had a whatever underneath. It was, you know, it had, it had a whatever underneath. So therefore. They won't let, that won't happen again. So those are the things that we've sort of felt constrained with, but I'm, I'm open that, you know, I'd like their solutions. To those, you know, it would be helpful.
Through the chair, can I just update on the kind of procedural things for this quickly? So for a memo. The commission, you know, is welcome to ask questions and debate, but there, it's not possible to add conditions to any. To the memo, so. The motion will be either that the. But the proposed changes are in conformance with the previous approval or that they are not. So, because there's no procedural way to add conditions. If the changes, if the commission feels the changes are not in conformance and votes that way. It would be, usually that would lead to a use permit revision where the applicant could bring forward. The changes. Or if there's smaller changes, it could be another memo. But I just wanted to clarify that before there's too much discussion about possible conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Sandoval.
Well, I would certainly be open to a memo that would say bigger living room windows that, you know, would. Bring in some balance. I think that that would, you know, do a lot for the, for the, the face of it. And between the dormer, I know the, the box window. I think that that's also going to be solved with, we'll take that into account with shrubbery. And a nice, you know, a taller, some kind of whether it's a, you know, vine on a trellis. Or whether or not it would be roses, climbing roses, or, you know, clearly we would do something on that.
Hi, my name is Ali Adib. I helped with the architectural plans, work with Vera. Commissioner Riggs, is it the, just the shape of the box window that's, that's an issue? Or are you okay with its location and size on the elevation if it were to not be a box window? And it could be like a normal window of a certain size or dimension? Or are you also concerned about the fact that it throws off the symmetry? Because from then, from an interior design perspective, that window has to be where it is. But and and previously, we had a bay window similar to the existing plan, but because. The house was, it turned out to be non-conforming. The only thing that could be added is, is a bay window that could, that that's cantilevered. About a maximum of a foot. So the question to you is, is it, if that bay window were to become like a normal window of, of a certain style, would it be okay in its, in its position? The way shown on the elevations? Or would that be also an issue?
Through the chair. I think. My. My primary goal if, as an advocate for the applicant here would be actually to. Keep the bay window as a non-conforming, a part of the non-conforming structure. Would like to confirm with Ms. Sandoval, but if you asked simply to remodel the roof on that bay window. Would that trigger the requirement for removal? I, I don't believe so. I think you can. Make repairs and reductions to a non-conforming element. Would that be?
I'm sorry, but we were told that once you remove, when, when, when the use permit was issued. Previously, there was no comment about certain portions of the attic being, being above five feet. So the areas of the attic above five feet are now counting towards a square footage. Which throws the, the, this building over the, the threshold of maximum floor area. For that reason, one, we were told that once the bay window is removed. It cannot be replaced with the same square footage. And the maximum allowable, what would be the bay window that we've shown on the plans, which is a cantilevered bay window, maximum a foot. And that's how we ended up showing that in the location because nothing else would. Would go, I mean, I could see having a window instead of a bay window in that location. But if you're asking us to keep the existing bay windows. And then work the entire floor plan around that, then there would be no remodel. That, that basically pretty much shoots down. What Vera is trying to accomplish with the interior design.
Well, if we could extend, or if we could extend the box window to the eight feet or, because now also the width is limited. To seven feet. So we had a lot, a wider box window originally designed. Or bay, whatever we had there. We did a box, yeah, but we had to reduce it to seven feet. So it looks, it is smaller than what we had ideally wanted.
Yeah, because you really need to modify that. In, in the interest of, of the, our volunteer commissioners. I want to limit this and. And at this point suggests that you, you probably have a very good solution, which is to. Provide something that goes between that box window and the new portico. Such as a trellis or other significant planting. And I can see that you not only have done a lot of thinking about this, but you also have very good understanding. So I think only to, to solve the dormer windows, which are the most difficult part because of their size. And the egress item, I understand that is a driver. Would be, I, I don't. Believe that the width has to be. Anywhere near that wide. That looks a great deal wider than thirty inches. And thirty inches is an easel, in terms of width, is easily. Acceptable, but you do have a height problem when you have true double hungs. I would like to point out though, if you replace it with casement windows, which are legal, but they have a center molyne. They will look like double hungs in terms of proportions.
I know, but that's what I have now and I, and we.
You don't have the molyne in the middle, though, that makes.
We do.
Oh, it's not on your rendering.
Oh, oh, no, the molyne, they mean that goes vertical or horizontal?
Oh, horizontal.
Yeah, but when you keep the windows open, it, it does, it doesn't look like a colonial window. It, it doesn't. And, and the others, we don't like the casement windows. Because they get weather problems. They're very difficult to clean. And so, I mean, we really want the double hung. And I mean, I was told this was the smallest, I don't mind them being skinnier. I mean, I'm not looking necessarily for the widest and tallest possible to squeeze in there. I just want the double hung style and, and. And what we, we were told it has to be. This width.
No, I deal with, I deal with egress windows on almost every house. And Mr. Barnes has in the last few years had to deal with egress windows as well. And the width is nothing like that, 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 that looks like four feet wide. So I think there are options that still are available to you. Without having the world's biggest dormer windows. And, and what I would like to see, and the reason I continue this discussion. In, in light of Ms. Sandoval's comments is that. I would really like to see you come back and, and seek conformance. Agreement with staff that does not include these oversized dormer windows. It's something that we would never approve on a new house. I don't think we'd ever approve it on a remodel. And to simply consider it a, conforming to a previous use permit would. Would just be inappropriate.
It sounds to me like the bay window, the way it's proposed is acceptable. Correct me please if I'm wrong. And the chimney is, is not an issue. So all that we're talking about is limiting the size of those front dormer. Windows Vera and that would be a very good trade off. To basically keep the width and, and, and then make them maybe a few inches taller. And go over the style push and that would be a, a great trade off.
Well, I'm willing to trade off at this point that, you know, we'll, we'll make as narrow as possible to have a double hung. But I, I'm not willing to agree to put in any kind of window just to make it small because we can't stand the casement and. And we need five feet, seven inches of square, whatever, to, to have me egress. Opening has to be five foot, seven inches in total. So Ali, maybe, I don't know, or even Commissioner Riggs can calculate what that is.
That's two and a half feet by two and a half feet. So. Yeah, or it's two feet by three feet or two, well, not even three feet, so. But I, I, we've got to let you do that separately. If you look around other homes and other second floor windows, you, you won't see them that big and fifty percent of them are egress windows. So I, I, I would just ask that you work a bit harder with those windows. And, and come back with something. It, you know, part of me wants to defend that lovely home that you have. And those windows will. Will be a scar on your home to be one.
Sorry, in terms of tolerances, are you recommending we keep the width and, and make the height? A few inches taller and, and, and maintain with those, with those parameters or can the width be a little bit wider than it is right now?
Oh, I think the width could be a couple of inches wider, but it, it, it's a matter of scale and. If you're a designer, I'm sure you have a sense. I, I, I'm sure you were aware when you proposed this, that it was a, a fingers crossed kind of thing, so.
Well, but I think that the solution, yeah, the solution would be skinnier and maintain that height. We're not going to get the egress on anything shorter than the current height that they're shown in the dormers. But they probably could be skinnier, which I agree, you know, might look a lot better. But then I'm going to also probably go back and look at the, the living room windows and see if they should be a bit.
So our task then is to find the, the, the skinniest. A double hung window that fits in, in the opening that you have, maybe a couple of inches wider, maybe three or four inches taller. Correct? And, and then, and then.
No, Ali, Ali, it's not going to happen. I'm sorry to tell you, I have looked at the windows forever. They have to be that height. They could be. I think they could be probably skinnier, but you cannot get it shorter because you have the. The wood in the middle where it opens, you have to have the window has to open, you know, from the top to the bottom and only half stays open, so. This is, I've researched the window, but let's come back with a solution.
Basically the same, similar scale, that's, that's, and, and what if you can't find something like that? What's the option?
You know, I, I hate to say it, but when. When the fire department pressed this rule into the building department. They forced us in many cases to take. Casement windows when we do not want them. This, this is part of what happens when. Government steps forward to save you from yourself and. It, it may end up being a casement window that looks like a dormer window. And sometimes you just can't. You, you, you can't beat the fire department. You just can't. So anyway, I, 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 I have to let you work this out. Because we have seven volunteer commissioners and what, what should be a, you know, a, a brief review here. And. To ask you to work this out and come back to staff and you may not have to talk to us at all again. If you can just bring the proportions of those dormer windows into something that. It, it's not going to be a scar on your house and visible to all neighbors and, and, and drive bys.
So if we do that, we, I won't have to come back to the committee only that, I mean, I just can't tell you how long I'm working on this and. What's in the pipeline, right? I've already exchanging houses with the neighbors and stuff.
You can confirm the, the, the staff, but no, i- i- if, if none of. These commissioners have an objection because you responded to this issue, then you won't need to talk to us. And certainly won't have to stay up so late.
So I just want to confirm this, Samir. So I think. One commissioner rig is proposing is that. We would have a vote that the memo is not in substantial conformance with the plan. But the hope would be that the applicant can work out changes. With the staff that won't require the application to come back to the commission. Is that consistent with what you're thinking, Mr. Riggs?
It is. Thank you for putting it distinctly.
Uh, may I ask, just to summarize this, what are the parameters? Specific parameters for us to work with as far as those dormer windows are concerned, specific parameters?
But to get them in proportion to the rest of the house. They're just out of proportion and, and that's not, I mean, you don't need to measure them in order to see that.
So Ms. Sandoval. Does that give the staff enough direction? That hopefully we don't have to see this before the commission again?
Certainly an option. Just looking at the procedures, there's also the option for a commissioner to make a motion. To find the changes in conformance and then the commission could vote or a commissioner could make a. Motion that the changes are not in conformance. I think that's kind of the stuff.
So do we have a motion?
Oh, of course, I would like to make a motion that it is not in conformance and limit. Thanks to the detailed explanation of the applicant. Limit the concern to the scale of the dormer windows. And of course invite a, in. A new or revised application to staff. It may be circulated among us, but if the proportion issue is solved, there, there certainly would be no problem from my end.
We have a second for that motion. Well, I'll second the motion. I'd like to put it to a vote. So do we still have Commissioner Barnes? So we're voting now. Mr. Barnes?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner DeCarty.
So the motion is that this is not in conformance, correct? So a yes is that it's not in conformance.
Correct.
Then I am a no.
Okay, Commissioner Harris.
Um, I'm also a no.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy is recused. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, it is not in conformance in terms of the dormer scale.
Commissioner Tate?
I'm also a no.
Okay, I'm gonna vote yes, so that gives us a. Three B tie with Commissioner Kennedy recused. So I'm gonna have to. Consult Ms. Sandoval. We have a tie, so the motion. I suppose the motion doesn't pass. Mean that the application is in substantial conformance.
I believe it's in substantial conformance. Yes, because the motion failed. That's correct.
Okay. Well, we have conclusion anyway. Maybe Commissioner Riggs, you could make a suggestion to the applicants about what's possible. Without the force of, you know.
Right, I, I think I've made it and I, I think. I think you would do yourself a very important favor. To the. To the architecture of your house, if you reconsidered those windows that you're proposing. Even in the awkward and unfortunate circumstance that you might have to live with casement windows. That look like. The correct proportion when they're closed and knowing that they will be open all the time. So I, I hope you will consider that. And I could say more, but I think it's best that I don't. So I hope that works.
Okay, just, just for clarity for the applicant, you were found to be in substantial conformance, so anything that you're hearing is, is advice, basically. So I'd like to close this item of regular business. Move on to item I on the agenda informational items. Ms. Sandoval, do you have some informational items for us?
Yes, so the next meeting is in three weeks. That'll be September thirteenth. So the agenda or the public hearing notice hasn't gone out yet. But we do have another study session and an EIR scoping session scheduled, and that's for the ten seventy-five O'Brien project. And then we're also looking at some smaller items. At least one single family home that it looked likely to be on that agenda. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Ms. Sandoval? I don't see any, so I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Sarah Doran.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Michael.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.